A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated June 16th, 2023, and reading as follows: The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, at 5:15 PM in the Multi-Use Room of the Delta County Chamber of Commerce. Sincerely yours, Nancy Cuzaraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. As we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Maller?
Here.
Commissioner View?
Here.
Mr. Moye?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Good evening, folks. The meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners will come to order. We have some, uh, thank you, Aaron. We have some...
A little bit of housekeeping things tonight. We have two microphones, so we'll be passing things around. I understand that this is a very emotional, some of the things on the agenda are extremely emotional. You will have your opportunity to speak during public comment on agenda items and also during general public comment. You get three minutes to discuss at both times. The Board won't interact with you either time, and I'm going to ask you to remain quiet in the audience, please, so everyone can have a chance to not only speak, but to hear those people who are speaking. After the meeting, if you need to talk to anybody, I will remain around. I'll talk to you until you're content, but we are going to ask if you're speaking, please refrain from personal attacks, so I don't have to rule you out of order. You can bring your point up without attacking people personally, but I guarantee you will all have your opportunity to speak under two times, one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end of the meeting. And thank you for making this a part of your night. We need approval of the minutes of the previous session of the County Board of 6:23.
Chairman, point of order, please.
Excuse me, you're not on the Commission.
Chairman.
I do not, on the Commission, please.
I wish to...
You're not having an opportunity to address this body.
Remove it from the agenda.
Ma'am, I ask you to sit down, please.
Serve the cease and disorder. It's my constitutional right to stand...
Yes, it is, but it's not your right. Law enforcement's going to ask you to be quiet.
This is what I'm supposed to do. Point of orders.
No, you have no right to call it. I'm asking you respectfully to sit down. You'll have your opportunity to speak. Now, we have motion made by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion on accepting these minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That would pass. All right, tonight, I need the approval of the agenda for this evening, or is there any additions to it?
I would like to add something to the agenda under, uh...
Microphone.
Commissioner View, here.
I would like to add, uh, between, uh, seven and eight, uh, number 7.5 to go into closed session.
Under new, under new business?
Under new business, to confer with our legal counsel. Is she here tonight?
Yes, she is.
Okay. Regarding the Pacific written opinion received May 12th, 2023, in connection with the potential annexation and its effect on the county.
All right, we have an addendum offered to the agenda by Commissioner View. He would like to have it as 7.5. That would go right after, um, the, uh, end of, uh, Grant H. Henderson, so, uh, before Escanaba Township's presentation on annexation. So is there any additional, um, addendums to come before this agenda? So all those in favor of accepting the agenda as amended?
We need a second.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner, forgive me. Do we have a second on Mr. View's, I apologize.
I will support.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Peterson, so the motion made by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Peterson. All those, are additional discussion?
Uh, yes.
We haven't even received the application yet, so why, uh, we want to look at an opinion of something we haven't had. I don't understand why we want to put this on here. I think it'd be best to get through it and, uh, the agenda, and if there's an opinion to be had, it should be had after the presentation, which would be on the next meeting, but obviously I don't see reason for it tonight. Well, uh, can I, can I kind of respond to that?
Yes, you can.
Uh, this is boundary altercations of Cornell and Escanaba Township from our prosecuting attorney of Delta County, and its review of all the things that were, um, brought up under the law of annexation, and I just thought it would be very appropriate that all the Commissioners here, it's just a short thing, exactly what she came up with, with all these, uh, Michigan compliance laws that we are to follow, and the potential harm or litigation that can come from it, um, what was been published in the paper so far. That's why I'm bringing it up. Uh, I just don't, it just doesn't seem, we haven't received it yet. I believe we should receive it, and then, uh, these actions come through. There's a lot of opinions out there, and a lot of, um, I'd rather see this go through our agenda than add this on here to confuse things. That's not necessary.
Right, um, we, it's a foregone conclusion that we will receive the item tonight on the agenda, but is there any additional discussion on this particular amendment to the agenda? All right, so, accepting the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Okay, so that's a four one, that would, that would pass.
No, no.
Oh, stand by?
It has to be, it has to be a unanimous.
Oh, sorry, I am corrected by our parliamentarian, uh, Mr. View, then, um, we have an objection to it, and, uh, so it's not, uh, unanimous, so I guess we don't add it? Is that correct, Nancy?
Yes, it says that, only by with unanimous consent of members present.
All right, this is going to pass this over to Nancy.
We appreciate your patience on it. It's two mics to go for everybody. So just advise them of, uh, your ruling as a parliamentarian.
I didn't think it had to be unanimous.
Okay, it says only with unanimous consent of the members present. May any committee report or other business be acted upon by the Board of Commissioners at any regular meeting or adjourned regular meeting unless a copy thereof has been delivered to each county commissioner, either with the agenda or separately, not later than the day prior to the meeting.
That ruling would mean that we would need a unanimous consent of the Board to offer an addendum or an amendment on the agenda, so it would be needed because of Commissioner Barron's objection that we are not going to go into closed session. Any questions, sir?
Well, I see here regarding, uh, an attorney, regarding, uh, an attorney's strategy or settlement litigation, I, two-thirds vote call vote is what I have.
Is that under our rules of procedure?
Well, that's under the rules of the Open Meetings Act.
No, but where our parliamentarian is pulling it's from our rules of procedure.
What, what supersedes?
Um...
The state, or can we, I don't know.
I don't know that I can answer that question, Mr. View. I don't know if I have the legal...
Okay, I mean, the only reason I brought it up, because I have that Open Meetings Act, that one statement where you can use attorney privilege, uh, client privilege to discuss something before you can publicly say it, and it says two-thirds vote call vote needed under the Open Meetings Act, but our policy is more stringent than that?
No, that's, that's...
That's to go into, um, a, a closed session? We would need two-thirds vote? So we can do that, but to get it on the agenda, this is under the agenda and our rules of procedure, to be able to add things to the agenda?
Okay, that's two different issues.
It's two different issues, yes.
So everything that we've done in a short period of time I've been on the Commission, we've all agreed to have the agenda items added or deleted, but I thought at one time we had someone that didn't want to delete something, and we still put it on.
We still did, yes, and that was on the stage.
So, I mean, that's, that's not fair.
All right, yes.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate, uh, your patience with this, trying to make sure that you hear this. Uh, moving on to, um, to a vote, we need a, we have a second, or a motion and a second. All those, we've had the vote, correct? I'm sorry, you're getting me off base, or I apologize. All right, motion by Commissioner Barron to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Supported, um, additional comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That would pass. Okay.
I oppose.
That's it? Okay, I'm going to keep going. Presentation of written communications, communications received and communications forwarded. Ashley, do we have any?
That's done on the first of the month.
All right, very good. Um, reports of standing statutory committees, special committees, and others?
Also done during the first of the month.
All right, we have, uh, public comment on agenda items. All right, there's a sign-in on this. Tell us your name, where you're from. You have three minutes, and please refrain from any personal attacks. Um, you can make your points very clear without doing that. I understand there's some emotional items on this agenda tonight, and you want a chance to hear from everybody. Thank you. Okay. Kevin DuBois, is that, am I saying it right? We will give you the mic. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, everybody. You guys got to put the switch. Good evening, everybody. My name's Kevin DuBois. I have been, I have it right now, 12 years ago, I got off the Escanaba Township Board. I was supervisor for 28 years. Uh, there's one family represented on the board up here that had zoning issues at every meeting for 28 years, whether they were land deals, or racetrack deals, or all kinds of zoning problems. Um, my point of view is, there's five of you, there's five districts. The only thing I'd like to comment on is Mr. Moye represents the city of Escanaba on your board, and if this ever comes to a vote for this annexation thing, my opinion is he should refrain from voting. Thank you.
I appreciate, uh, your input. Thank you, sir. We have, uh, next up, we have, um, John K. Myron?
Yes.
Mr. Myron, welcome.
Thank you. Um, my name's John Myron, I'm from Cornell, the Escanaba Township, or Cornell, both. Hi, my name's John Myron. I would like to address the issues about the gathering of signatures for the annexation application. At no point did I lie, forged signatures, or intentionally deceive any individual to get their signature. I went door to door with legal paperwork and did my best to explain what I was pursuing. I did this between my day job, running a farm, and my personal life. That is why the signatures took a couple of years. While doing this, I mostly heard how residents felt landowners wanting to use their land for solar had been treated horribly by Escanaba Township's Board and Planning Commission. This was usually followed by, "I'd like to sign, but I want to stay neutral," or "not be involved." Some said no right away. I understood that, and they were thanked for their time. Some people signed and later changed their mind. If they contacted me before the application was submitted to the attorney and for publishing, their wishes and rights were respected and their name was removed. I had many supportive conversations with some people before they signed. It appears some of those people would like to have their signatures removed. Only two people have contacted me, one being more of a threat. Anyone could have contacted me with questions or concerns, but they did not. Based on what I have read and heard, these individuals were pressured and fed misinformation to cause fear and panic to those who have spent the last six years making sure they don't have to look at solar. I can't say it wasn't expected, I know how Escanaba Township operates. When trying to work with the township to install solar farms, this was always the case. Facts were ignored, lies were spread, and nastiness in that Flat Rock area prevailed and ruined a great thing for the whole township. People use Facebook to spread lies and fear, but in the last seven years, only one person came to my house to discuss the issue and left with a better understanding of the situation. Close-minded people do not look for personal confrontation. They resort to using Facebook to share their views and then control opposing information. Seven years ago, property owners were contacted about leasing their land for solar farms. Those that wanted to review private contracts and tried to work with the township to install solar farms that would be beneficial to landlords, townships, schools, and county, the leasing company was willing to compromise to respect the property rights of concerns of everybody. The behavior of residents of Flat Rock area attending those meetings was embarrassing. This isn't much compromising with people that interrupt informational presentations on an agenda with a complaint that they are taking more than three months. The next few years of meetings were similar to this. False accusations and complete rejection of professional review and opinions that didn't fit the opposing agenda. New board members were voted in, they were individuals that organized groups, meetings, and displayed signs on their property against solar farms. Only after they approved raises in their own pay, they have worked their best...
I have to cut you off here at the three-minute mark. I appreciate your time and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Lori Tronjo will be next. Thank you for signing up. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I'm Lori Tronjo, I live in Escanaba Township. This is a continuation of John Myron's letter. The next few years of meetings were similar to this. False accusations and complete rejection of professional review and opinions that didn't fit the opposing agenda. New board members were voted in. They were individuals that organized groups, meetings, and displayed signs on their property against solar farms. Only after they approved raises in their own pay have they worked their best to use their elected positions to fit their personal wants and views. During the search for a new township attorney, certain board members narrowed the results to law firms that fit their agenda regardless of expense, even commenting on how the law firm that was eventually hired and still used was successful in helping townships shut solar farms down. Escanaba Township Board has chosen to spend taxpayer money on attorneys to take private property rights away from landowners. Annexing to Cornell Township will give all affected landowners their rights back, solar farms or no solar farms. Landowners shouldn't have to sit at township meetings and listen to board members brainstorm about ways for you to use your private property. Board members were not asked for their personal opinions, they were asked to act as elected officials and perform their duties without bias according to laws and ordinances. The majority of tax base in Escanaba Township comes from residential properties. A large portion of the proposed annexation is agricultural land, and does not represent a large portion of property taxes. Escanaba Township is currently on the road to minimizing property rights with ordinances like those you would find in a gated community. Most recently, spending many meetings trying to implement the fencing ordinance, only to determine what would be time-consuming and costly for now. Escanaba Township only wants to see their vacant agricultural land turned into residential properties, so they can increase their tax base, hire more attorneys, and create more ordinances. The proposed boundary line would let landowners keep their land and use it as they see fit, as they have for many years now. If a solar farm was ever put up, it would be easier to convert back to complete agricultural land than it would if it was split up and turned into homes. Landowners don't want to sell their private property, and they aren't looking for anyone's opinion on what to do with it. They are exercising their own property rights. Currently, the only way to do so is to move the township boundary. Those that have fought so hard to remove the rights of landowners and would be involuntarily move to Cornell Township if this annexation is passed, can now understand how it feels to not have a say in their own property. Imagine having that feeling for the next seven years or longer, and Escanaba Township, private property rights are only respected depending on who you are. So we're asking the Delta County Commissioners to be fair, unbiased, and use their facts to protect their property.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you, thank you. Okay, Tom Sauber, oh no, that was, Patty Lankor is next?
Hi, I'm Patty Lankor from Flat Rock. I hope everyone realizes Escanaba Township has put themselves on county board agenda to discuss the annexation after threatening Delta County with a lawsuit if the board discussed the annexation at these meetings. Everyone should be concerned that an attorney was contacted, decisions were made without discussion at a public meeting and ma- making a vote on action or response. This is a perfect example of how things work in Escanaba Township. I have been in Flat Rock for eight years, and I have seen a lot of things that go on, and it depends who you are if things get approved, so I just want you to hear everyone's opinion and look for everyone else. Think of the farmers, too. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tom Sauber, please. Sir, good to see you.
Tom Sauber, Escanaba Township. Nice to see you, Dave. Uh, I have reviewed some of the statements that the writer has stated in his application that was submitted to the board. The comment about promoting consistent regulations. Cornell Township and several other townships have requested that the county do zoning. Other townships did not. Cornell Township did not request the county to change the boundary lines to accommodate this. Both townships voted the proposed annexation down. In addition, the Delta County Township Association sent a letter to the board stating they do not approve of the annexation between Escanaba and Cornell Township. In their letter, it states that they expect the county to understand and respect the governance of all the townships in Delta County. In the writer's letter, it states that the signature cannot be withdrawn once it's posted. Over 210 individuals have requested to have their names removed from the original petition, plus 10 individuals who have signed petitions opposing that. You cannot discount that fact, and even if the original petition is deemed legal. With reference to advancing individual collective property rights, there are 153 landowners who are residents in the proposed area. There are 132 of those residents in the proposed area of landowners who did not sign the petition or petition to have their names removed. What about the individual and collective property rights? What about the taxpayer rights? Cornell Township is two and a half mils higher than Escanaba Township. Do you want to increase the property taxes of 132 landowners in the proposed area? The reference to fostering economic development, do you want to do it at the sacrifice of the loss of three elected members of the township board, the township's tax base, the loss that the township fire department supports through budget reductions, and loss of revenue from providing mutual aid? Do you want to sacrifice the loss of a data millage as Cornell Township does not have a data millage, and the services that they will be lost to those landowners who live in the proposed area? The writer references it as a political decision. Lastly, he states that this is a political decision because it involves municipal bonds. If that is the case, then honor the votes of the elected boards of Cornell and Escanaba Township, the recommendation of the elected township board members of the Delta County Township Association, as well as over the 750 signatures on file in Escanaba Township opposing it by voiding all to the petition. One last thing I did notice on the petition that I got, I noticed all the addresses on the petition themselves are redacted, the addresses only. I'm not sure if that's legal or not. I always thought petitions were part of, uh, uh, public record once they were submitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sauber. Judy Lacoste.
Judy Lacoste, city of Escanaba. I'm asking the Board to vote against this annexation. It's been proven that a lot of people who signed this did so under false pretenses, and once their names removed, or they weren't landlords, and some, uh, landowners, and some of them have passed away. Why would you vote to disrupt so many lives that only a few will benefit from? This won't affect me personally, but my heart goes out to those that it will. So I'm asking the same of you. Dig deep and do the right thing. Vote now for all of them. Mr. Barron should not be voting on this. If the prosecuting attorney is here, she should come up during public comment and address what Commissioner View asked to be added. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Barron, please. Tom Barron. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I just want to mention that most of these landowners that want to go are second, third, fourth, fifth generation, and now we got a chance to keep our land and make it a profitable park, uh, for, for the next two, three generations. That's what it's, for us, it's about. Can you pass anything on that you have? That's what we want. We love our land. Farmers love their land more than anything, you know? The farm always came first, you know, throughout our lives. You got something going with the kids, you have to say no, the wife has to take them because the farm came first. And now we got a chance to, to keep the farm for years, you know? Not like the township does, or just sell it if you can't make money out of it. You just don't know what the love of land is all, all about until you own it and work it for generations, you know? It's just, it's a beautiful thing. And they think that we're going to hurt the land, no we're not. They wouldn't law solar if it was going to hurt the ground, or water, anything. Thank you very much.
Tom Patrick, please. Tom Patrick.
It's Tom and Teresa, you can't read your last name, so...
I'm sorry.
Whoever Tom and Teresa are. Could you spell your last name, please?
I apologize, sir.
B-I-E-T-S-D.
Oh, I was just a little bit off, I'm sorry. Please, welcome.
Tom Beach. Yeah, I'm against it, too. I think the overwhelming people that, uh, been against it, every meeting I went to, overwhelmingly, the Board voted it down in Cornell and in Escanaba, the people in both townships are against it. I think it'd be totally wrong for three people to decide their fate. I think you better think hard about that. And I think you, sir, and Moye, perhaps should step down in this, and I know he should, Bob Barron, because it's direct client conflict of interest there. Um, it's nothing against anybody, it's just what the township wants. He makes the township up, the people, not the land, but the people of the township make it up. And, uh, you said in your opening prayer, the citizens of the county. It's the citizens, not three people. The citizens have spoken. Be right by that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have, uh, the name Teresa, this is the only that I have. Okay. Good evening and welcome.
Teresa Peach. I basically agree with no annexation. Um, I'm thinking of all the people in both counties and maybe even beyond. Nobody knows what's going to happen because of this. Um, and I truly believe Mr. Barron should recuse himself just for conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we have, uh, Kylie Kalashak, please. Nope, we've got to turn that puppy off, because we're getting deep back in the light. There you go. Sorry about that, welcome.
You're up, you're good, you're good. All right, Kylie Kalashak, Escanaba Township. I'll start by stating the obvious. Once again, we do not support this annexation. The fact that this was even allowed, this application was allowed, shows how corrupt the Board really is. This is not a valid application. First, let's take a look at this annexation map here, shall we? The red is all annexation. This? Okay, let's see here, give me a second. Many of the signatures obtained, including my family's, are, yes, Escanaba Township, but not within the annexation area. Second, and most importantly, the signatures were obtained through deceit, and a majority of them... And a majority of them have asked that their names be removed. It states on the application for annexation that I've read that the signatures cannot be moved capriciously. The definition of capricious is characterized by unpredictable changes in attitude or behavior, impulsive. I would not say these people are being impulsive. Rather, they have just been formed of the true malevolent purpose that their names were collected for. There was no fine print for these trusting people to read. They gave their signatures with good faith based on the word of a local man. Without stating that it was on behalf of Bobby Barron, John Myron went door to door collecting signatures from my family and others. He sat on their porches drinking coffee, visiting with them for 20 minutes casual- before casually asking them to sign a petition as he left. He barely even mentioned it, like it was an afterthought. He said it would just straighten boundary lines for some farmers. These would straight to anybody here. No, didn't think so. He entered my aunt's home, sitting at her table. He showed her a list of people who had signed before. Your family down the road wants to help and support the petition, he told her as he handed her the pen. There's a reason Bobby Barron can sit up here and listen to all these insulting truths without flinching. It's because he's been one step ahead the entire time, haven't you Bobby? He also knew that John Myron was collecting signatures right on the border of District Two. This means the people who were lied to, who there- who signed this signature, will have no say when he is recalled. All of this boils down to a handful of greedy men, in particular, one who has been in local politics for far too long. Thank you.
Folks, I need you to bring the meeting back to order. Ladies and gentlemen, I need you to bring the meeting back to order, please. Thank you. Frank Chernick. I would also ask that you would turn off your cellphones, please.
Okay. First Amendment right to record.
If you want to record, that's fine. We're not talking about that. I mean, turn off the volume in your cellphones, sir. If no one's complaining about your recording.
That's Chenier.
Oh, Chenier, I apologize. Frank Chenier. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Frank Chenier, resident of Escanaba Township, groundwater geologist. I've been in this business for 53 years. There are many disadvantages for annexing Escanaba Township with Cornell Township. The one disadvantage of concern I would like to focus on is on the protection of our groundwater aquifer, which serves as our only source of domestic water in the area proposed to be annexed. With the annexation of the proposed land to Cornell Township, we would lose the protection of our groundwater aquifer, which we now have, if industrial solar were ever to be developed. Our current zoning ordinance provides the protection we need for our groundwater supply, and we would lose that. The bedrock serves as the only source of groundwater available in the area proposed to be annexed. It consists of highly fractured limestone and layers of sandstone. The groundwater contained within these formations serve as the only groundwater available in the west part of the township. The next lower formations consist of pre- cambran bedrock, which are non-producers of groundwater. The soils serve as a filter to the surface water, that's rainwater, snow melt, runoff, et cetera, that recharge the underlying aquifer. With the combination of the thin soil layer and the underlying fractured bedrock offer, they offer little opportunity for the accurate- for the adequate filtration of waters recharging the aquifer, which make it very vulnerable to contamination. Development of industrial solar, if it were to occur, would more than likely require the drilling of hundreds and probably thousands of holes for solar panel support posts in the fractured limestone bedrock. This would provide avenues for direct recharge of surface waters with little or nor fil- little or no filtration into the underlying aquifer. With the annexation of the proposed land to Cornell Township, we would lose the protection of our groundwater aquifer if industrial solar were be- to be developed. Our township ordinance requires development of industrial solar within a designated area. This area is underlaid by deep soils that would provide for the needed protection of our groundwater. Protection of our aquifer is of very significance and important, not only because of it being vulnerable to contamination, but also due to there being no practical alternate source of groundwater available. That is if the present supply were to become unusable. Thus, the need to protect our groundwater, not only for the present time, but also for future generations, is huge. It's a huge issue, and we cannot afford to put it at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tom.
Another good evening. Let me turn it off, please, or flip the switch on that microphone. All right, this will be a final call for public comment on agenda items. Please state your name and welcome.
Barbie Thelma, Escanaba Township. I'd like to address the annexation. Earlier today, all of you were aware of the notice to Robert Barron, the county supervisor, AKA Commissioner Barron. He received a cease and desist annexation of Cornell and Escanaba Township. This is a legal binding contract between a servant and your master. The people are the ones that run this country, not the people that are elected. We the people notices and affidavit- affid- dated momos. That's what they're called. They helped me. They helped our township. I wasn't even ready to talk at all today because I certainly did not want to even see this. I certainly did not want to see Mr. Barron sitting where he's sitting. I've been praying very, very hard for his heart to soften too. And I know, I know people don't think that that can happen, but I do. I truly do. The annexation is an unlawful act, and it goes against, well, it's a violation of our constitutional rights. In 2018, Michigan Constitution removed the annexation in Michigan Constitution. And I would like to know if any of yous are able to show me where the cons- in our constitution, where you are delegated to author- for any authority to block the people's right to regulate their own government. Our townships, if anything, if we wanted this to happen, we should be voting on it, not yous. I don't want anybody to get in trouble. I really don't. I want everybody to realize that we were given, God-given rights. Our founding fathers gave our rights to us under God. They got all those laws under the Bible, in from the Bible. And you're not following the same constitution that we should be following, and many of us don't even, don't even know what it is. We have to get back to that. That's the only way we're going to ever change this country to go right back in the right situation that we should be a long time ago. We've been dragged down way too long.
Thank you, Ms. Thelma.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have anybody else? Thank you for coming up tonight. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items? State your name and welcome.
Good evening, Bonnie Hakala, Escanaba. Thanks for listening. I do believe Barbie is right when she said that people should have the right to vote, and it is we the people, and our government is, for the people, by the people. And so I think that's what you're seeing here, that people are trying to influence what's happening with this decision. I think the people have already spoken because they voted on it, and they voted no several times. So that's... The boards, the boards for the townships have voted no. So, that's the people voting on this issue. And following the Constitution is important. In our, and the way things are going today, our Constitution is what we can stand on. And if we look at our highest levels of government, and if they're trying to overthrow our say and our rights, then it's our job to speak up. So I'd like you to listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment on agenda items? State your name, sir. Good evening.
Hello? Is that better? Okay, my name is Larry Clope. I live out on County Road 416 in Escanaba Township. I asked the board to vote no on this. This is a very unusual and extreme example of annexation. Normally, an annexation occurs from a township by a village, by a city, in some situations, typically in order to wind up enhancing various services that are provided to people. And that's not the case at this at all. There's really no benefit. It's going to cost me upwards of $400 more for fire protection because of the distance change to the facilities. When we go through and wind up taking a look at this and take a look at the map that was drawn out, I don't understand, nor did I have any input in which areas were included. My property was included? I don't want it. When I go through and take a township, completely tear it apart, put it in a situation, I talked to our people in our fire department, they don't know whether we're going to have a fire department in Escanaba Township after it's over. It leaves a small strip, which from the demographic situation, to provide services to the remaining part of the township, is going to be very crazy because it's a very thin strip running east to west for a fairly long distance. It's going to be very difficult. I've gone through as an engineer and faced a lot of different situations, making tough decisions. I'm going to admonish the board with a little phrase that I learned. I apologize, I don't know who said it, but it certainly has a lot of truth. Think the process through very carefully. Then ask me the question, does it make sense? In other words, does all these changes and ramifications of what you're going to do, does it make sense? Or are you just wishing it worked? I don't think the county commission really needs to be standing in a position where they're just wishing. Think it through carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Public comment on agenda items. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Dave Ademey from Walz Township. I'm here to talk a little bit about the annexation. This, what I'm holding in my hand, is the most valuable resource on the planet. And every day, it's going to get more valuable, and more valuable, and more valuable. And we are sitting on a lot of it. I would ask the commissioners that are going to vote today, did you guys, any of you read the Menominee Delta County Health Department report that Escanaba Township based their industrial commercial solar program on? That is why Mr. Barron was denied his application, not because they dislike Mr. Barron, but because they understand the ramifications of the potential for groundwater contamination. Does anybody in the room hold an industrial commercial wastewater treatment operator's You don't really need to, to understand the ramifications of what can happen to our groundwater. And let us remember why we're here today. We're not here because this is going to benefit the county somehow. We're here because it's going to benefit Mr. Barron. Period. We would not be having this discussion if it were not for you, sir. You are given the chance, the board, to do the right thing. You're here for the will of the people. I think we all know what the will of the people is. It is not to annex. I am personally pro-solar. I like the program, but I understand the ramifications of the health department's report and the ramifications of the groundwater, having held industrial commercial wastewater operator's license. Like I said, you don't need that to understand, but it definitely gives you an insight. You guys have the opportunity to do the right thing tonight. Are you going to do what's best for the county, or are you going to do what's best for Commissioner Barron? That's the question we have to ask ourselves. I guess I got nothing else, and we're going to see what kind of character and fortitude the gentlemen have today, and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dave.
Public comment on agenda items. Please bring the meeting back to order. Folks, please bring the meeting back to order. State your name and welcome.
My name is Judy Ademey. The young man that just spoke is my son, as most of you probably know. I really dislike standing here and having to have my back to everybody, having lived with a speech teacher for almost 50 years, so I apologize to you all, because it's extremely rude. My question is, what does a man gain when he loses his soul? How important is profit over character? How important is profit over taking advantage of all of your neighbors and the people who are going to be so impacted by this?
Mrs. Ademey, could you address the board, please?
Certainly. It would be so nice if this were on the side so I could see everybody. I apologize. I've been well-trained. I just want to say before I sit down, and I've said this every time I've stood up here and spoke, and I end with the same sentence, "Mr. Barron, have you no shame." Thank you.
Thank you. Bring the meeting to order, please. If somebody at the microphone, state your name and welcome.
My name's Teresa Hall, and I have no dog in this fight, but you have people standing up here and saying, "Mr. Barron is the only one who wants us." You have other landowners who do have a dog in this fight. I would not want your job for a million years, and I appreciate that you do it. And everyone here that is mad at Mr. Barron, Mr. Wal, John, Steve, Bob, if you think it's such an easy job, you need to run. Because no matter what they do, no one's going to like them. Because if they vote for annexing, you won't like them. If they vote against annexing, the other guy's not going to like them. I just want you to take in consideration, you have more than Mr. Barron to think about. There are other landowners who do want annexing. Thank you.
What is your last name?
Hall, H-A-L-L.
Which township?
I'm in Baldwin Township. I said I don't pimp.
Okay, we have general, or not general, sorry, public comment on agenda items. State your name and welcome.
Hello, my name is Kay Van- can you hear me?
Yeah, pop up.
Huh? Don't keep the burner on.
My name is Kay Van Brocklin, and I didn't know anything about this annexation until I got back from Arizona. I went up to get my dump permit, and I heard people chatting, and I asked some questions. Then I started doing some probing, and I said, "What can I do to help?" Now, this is from the paper. Twenty-six people own land involved. All of these people here, I bet, don't own acreage for solar. So I went to my neighbors. Tell me how you signed this petition. What did you know? They didn't know what they were signing. One was told, "I want to put storage sheds up." One was told, "I just need to move my boundaries a little. I just need this and that." They were not informed correctly. They were not informed correctly. When that happens, that's called a lie. Lies don't get you very far. So I'm really asking you men sitting here, and I didn't mention names, I want you to understand that. I did not mention anybody's name when I talked to people. They mentioned names to me. So think about what you're voting on here. Actually, you shouldn't be voting on it. We shouldn't be voting on it. We are the people. You represent us. So tell me, how do we get a vote on it? How do the people vote on it? Can you, anybody here on this board answer that for me? Mr. Moyle?
We can't interact right now. We can answer under Commissioner's concerns.
Okay, because I would like to know, what do we do to get this on hold? Thank you much.
Very, very appreciate it.
Kay, where are you from? What township? Oh, Escanaba.
Okay. Comment on agenda items, please. Comment on agenda items. State your name and welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen. Luna Whitney, Escanaba Township. In 1961, Justice Black wrote, "In a representative democracy such as this, these branches of government act on behalf of the people and, to a very large extent, the whole concept of representation demands upon the ability of the people to make their wishes known to their representatives. To hold that the government retains the power to act in this representative capacity and yet hold at the same time that the people cannot freely inform the government of their wishes would impute the Sherman Act, a purpose to regulate not business activity but political activity, a purpose which would have no basis whatsoever in legislative history. The people of Escanaba and Cornell Townships have made their wishes to you known. They do not want annexation. The needs of the many outweigh the wants of the few and especially the one."
Bring the meeting back to order, please. Man, just speak your, say your name, please, where you're from and welcome.
Hi, this is Deb Malding and I don't need a microphone. I was not prepared to come up and speak tonight, but after listening to my neighbors, my friends, I developed a very serious emotional feeling with what is going on. The people that are looking for the annexation, particularly the farmers, I understand. There are a number of you that I either went to school with you or my kids went to school with your children. I know what your farming situation is. I know that there is land out there that is not being used, it is not making you money, but it is costing you money. I understand that. But it should not be at the sacrifice of your neighbors, at their home properties, their extra properties. It's not just Escanaba Township. There are people in this area that actually own property in Escanaba and Cornell that are against this. I know I'm being very emotional, I'm sorry, but I feel like this situation is making enemies of our friends and neighbors. People are not speaking to each other and when they see each other, they will turn their backs. They have caused fights within families and I think this is being pressured, as was said, for the many, not the few. That's the way this should be characterized. It shouldn't just supplement one or two or 10 or 15 people at the expense of the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
If you would like to comment, please, on agenda items. Come up and state your name and welcome.
Kelly Vangenhoven, City of Escanaba. I would like to comment on new business item number three, consent judgment, garden township litigation. In viewing the board packet which I received at 3:39, I apologize for not being more prepared. It states, "Garden Township, a Michigan general law township plaintiff versus Delta County, a Michigan municipal corporation and Heritage Sustainable Energy LLC. In the 2020 election, Commissioner Moyle took an excess contribution amount from two members of Heritage Sustainable Energy totaling over $3,000. Now we see years later that there is litigation. I'm very concerned that if voting is taken place on this annexation, we will once again find Delta County in possible litigation with Escanaba Township. This is gonna cost the taxpayers of Delta County thousands and thousands of dollars. We have seen through Commissioner Moyle taking these excess contributions that he has self-interest or self, he just wants to see the money. And so, number one, consent judgment, garden township litigation, I would ask that Commissioner if there is any judgment on this tonight or any voting on this tonight that you recuse yourself. And to all the other commissioners voting tonight for the annexation or against the annexation, please consider your thoughts thoroughly. Thank you."
Comment on agenda items, please. State your name and where you're from. Good evening and welcome.
Hello? Can you hear me back? Okay, this annexation application was filed for one purpose.
Your name and where you're from, sir?
Warren Boden, Escanaba Township. Okay, this annexation application was filed for one purpose. It was to construct a solar farm in Escanaba Township. The original solar farm proposal for Escanaba Township was for 1,200 acres. It was scaled back to 811 acres over a 25-year period. Through my research, farmers would earn $300 to $2,000 per acre per year. I estimated on the lowest end were $300 here. Eight hundred and eleven acres times $300 times 25 years equals about $6 million. I believe this would be for about 10 farmers' lanes. So each farmer would earn a minimum of $608,000, probably much more. Okay, on top of that, they will gain tax breaks from federal and Michigan tax rebates. That means they and one Delta County Commissioner member will benefit well financially. So how much will the rest of you residents receive? Zero dollars. Not to mention hikes in property taxes, insurance rates, reduced fire service, township chaos. There will also be attorney fees and court costs to fight this. And who will pay for these expenses? Us taxpayers. So do you still want to annex 19,000 acres to profit approximately 10 farmers? Now, the Bureau of Land Management and Department of Energy have passed laws. Solar farms can now be built on public lands. They can lease out these public lands to solar developers. Michigan ranks 15th in the United States with public lands or 28% of total lands in the state. This is where solar farms should be built. Homeowners don't want solar farms in their backyard. Would you buy a house with a 1,200-acre solar farm in your backyard? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Public comment on agenda items, please. Public comment on agenda items. One more call, please. Public comment on agenda items. Very good, sir. State your name, where you're from and welcome.
My name is Ed Flannan, County for the Cornell Township. I guess by now I'm probably a household name. So I'm not gonna say anything about the annexation tonight because I said enough. But there's just one thing that irks me. When I hear people referring to these as solar farms, do people know what the definition of a farm is? It's not. Solar is an energy. A farm is agriculture. Don't blame me looking up the dictionary.
Thank you, sir. State your name and where you're from and welcome.
Chuck Irving, Escanaba Township. With this solar deal, I've worked on just about all of these farms. I understand what they're going through. But my question is, why is 19,000 acres being moved? Why not just their land? I can tell you why. A certain board member wants to bankrupt Escanaba Township. That's why. But Debbien said, one of the board members likes to state and his conversation with folks. I have one for him. There are evil people, the press, the media. There are bad people and nobody, nobody lies like they do. They do.
Public comment on agenda items, please. Public comment on agenda items. I'm doing once. Public comment on agenda items. Going twice. All right, we will close. Public comment on agenda items. For those of you who came and spoke tonight, thank you. And moving on to committee reports. Do we have any reports from our committees? The administrator's report will be next and that'll be Ashley.
Good evening. During the past month, myself and the hiring committee for the Parks Manager's position have been interviewing applicants. I would like to thank all the applicants who set aside time in their day to meet with us. I am pleased to announce that the position has been offered to a candidate contingent on the pre-employment process. Due to the prior commitments with their current employer, the applicant is not able to start their position as Parks Manager until January 1. So what are we gonna do about the Delta County Parks Plan? I will be presenting to the Finance Committee to hire a Parks Maintenance position. The Park Maintenance Personnel will be hired earlier than we had discussed before. Commissioner Peterson has often to be, offered to be more present at the parks during this time to learn more about how the parks are being operated by the Conservation District. For the Delta County Airport, tomorrow is the first cutoff, first day cutoff for applicants for the Airport Manager position. This position remained open and still accepting applicants. However, the applications that have already been received and resumes will be sent to the Airport Board for review for possible candidates for the interview process. On June 14th, the FAA inspector was on-site. We do not have results of this inspection, however, he recognizes the short notice given to the county for the resignation of the Airport Manager. In early July, the airport personnel will be conducting PFA stormwater sampling with the assistance of Prenton Newhoff. Also, on May 12th, the State Court Administrative Office allocated additional funding for the trial court automatic clean slate implementation. With these funds, courts are able to request reimbursement for overtime or temporary staffing to timely respond to public records requests, removal of bench warrants and other implementation-related work. Delta County Circuit Court received $6,444 and District Court received $13,881 cap for this. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I would need a motion to place this on order. Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All right, all those in favor of passing, I think if I was saying aye. Aye, aye, aye. That would pass. Thank you, Ashley. Department head updates. Do we have an update from any department head in county service? Seeing none. We would generally order some business. We have no unfinished business for our new business. We would look at the payment of our bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. The grand total of bills of $1,215,910.06. Commissioner expenses of $3,873.76.
All right, gentlemen, I would need a motion, payer bills. Moved by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner Peterson, or excuse me, Barron. Additional discussion?
I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. You.
Can you, uh...
Sometimes the payment of the bills is quite extensive. I was wondering if it was possible, if any extenuating bills came up that aren't normal bills, you know, the month stuff could be actually pointed out to the commission for us to take a look at.
I'm not sure what you mean, but is there something bizarre because of the big price taker?
No, I tried to go through all the bills and it's the same thing all the time, you know, like the J.O. costs $5,000 every two weeks, the feed and stuff, but I'm saying something that comes in that the commission would be not informed about that we normally don't do.
So are you asking our administrator if...
Well, if there's a, I'm on the Delta County landfill bill and something broke down there, they would send me, they'll approve the payment of the bills, but they'd have a listing that, well, rolling machine is, you know, $20,000 extra because of this. And then I don't have to stand so much on the normal stuff, but just take a look at extenuating bills that would come through. I'm just throwing it out there. Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, Commissioner. Thank you. Roll call, clerk.
Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes.
Item number two is the 2223 HMEP grant application. All right, very good.
The HMEP grants support our local emergency planning committee by reimbursing us for updated and new offsite response plans for sites that have been reporting hazardous chemicals at their facilities. We are required to have such plans for certain sites in the county. The grant also reimburses us for the cost of our subscription for the Tier 2 manage, manager system that Eagle maintains, where I am able to retrieve the facility's chemical reports and other information for planning purposes. The commissioner supported applying for the grant earlier in the year and this is now just the grant document that needs your signature. The grant will be completed in the middle of September and we usually receive the actual funds around December or January.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Motion to support? Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion, gentlemen? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, aye. Aye, aye, aye. That would pass. Item number three is the consent judgment for the Garden Township litigation.
Commissioners, as you've seen attached, we just need approval of this judgment for the prosecuting attorney to sign. If she would like to speak on it or if you would like her to, I think she's here.
Does anybody have any questions for Lauren? Could we have our prosecutor come up, please? Good evening and welcome. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson, you have questions?
I'm just, yeah, just explaining what's going on here. I've read this, and I just don't have a good grasp of it. It just came about, I think, before I was my time.
Absolutely. The litigation dates back about a year. It was filed sometime in July. The county was looped in to the litigation from Garden Township because the county had issued the initial building permits related to solar farm that Heritage was planning on putting up in the Garden Township area. We had filed the appropriate documents. It's been ongoing for about the last year. This consent judgment, it is my recommendation we sign it. The county is out no money for this judgment, basically, at this point. There's an agreement between Heritage and Garden Township to allow for Heritage to pursue their solar farm with certain concessions by Garden Township, and the county's original building permits kind of go to the side. So there's no money out, there's no admissions out from the county at any point.
Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate your time. All right, we have heard from the prosecutor. I would need a motion to, basically, accept or? All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson. Seconded by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one will pass. The job description for the Chief Accountant clerk? Local op, uh, are there local options for the Administrator and Enforcement Clerk?
This has went through the Personnel Committee, and it was approved. The recommendation is to make this change. The only change in the job description was the removal of with starting wage of 19.42 an hour. The removal was necessary because the job description is dependent on the contract wage skills, which change annually. There is no need for that language.
Commissioners, any questions, or what's your pleasure? We have a motion by Commissioner Melner. Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That would pass. All right, the retirements of M. Karen, request for lump sum payout, and also to fill the Chief Accountant clerk and Local Options Administrator Enforcement Clerk. Commissioner Peterson has moved to bring this forward. Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would think it would be nice if we would send a letter, of course, on behalf of the commission, thanking that person for their service. Bob Barron seconded. Okay, so that passes resignation of I. Cooper to fill Corrections Officer's position as well. Item number six. We would also like to send this individual a letter thanking them for their service. But I would need a motion to accept the registration and fill that position. Moved by Commissioner Peterson to, and supported by Commissioner You, to accept the resignation and to fill the position. Additional discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Okay. Number eight is the end of the grant for H. Henderson.
This position was a temporary grant-funded position, and I would like approval to send a thank you letter to Ms. Henderson for the time she had spent in District Court fulfilling that position.
Do you need a board motion for that? Okay, we've done obviously this, acknowledge her and thank her for her service and to the county. All right, Escanaba Township Presentation on Annexation?
This is presented by Kim Kanav Wycov of Escanaba Township.
Yes. Yes, we will take a five-minute recess. Kim, you're still, you're still on base. But you can use the bathroom or whatever you need. This meeting will be recessed for five minutes.
Yeah, discrimination. And slavery too. The communists?
Yes.
Oh. Out here, man.
Go back to 1960, man.
Oh, 61.
Oh, yeah, wait a minute. Don't talk to me about it, because I'm alive here.
Yeah, hopefully you're still.
Was that on the agenda? Did I get the right word?
The meeting will come to order again, please. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have your seats, please. This meeting will come to order, please. Thank you very much. We are now coming back to order and heading into business. And Ms. Kanav Wycov, you have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you. I received the application for annexation as, I'm sure that you have, and I reviewed it, as I'm sure that all of you have. In paragraph one, the application says, quote, "This modification increases economic development, increases alignment of the townships with the goals and objectives of the whole county, and advances anti-tax personal property rights," close quote. Escanaba Township was established in 1862. For 161 years, Delta County was in favor of Escanaba Township and our rural farming community and our way of life. Now, one of your own county commissioners has taken issue with Escanaba Township. In 2017, there were nine landowners who were claiming personal property rights. Those rights were addressed along with the rights of the other 2,035 residents of Escanaba Township. And once again, one of your own county commissioners has taken issue with it. This application for annexation is a direct result of that. This annexation will displace 400 and, or, excuse me, 246 families of Escanaba Township. What about their property rights? Is this commission willing to violate their personal property, property rights for one of your own? Is this the hill you are willing to die on? Is this the political suicide you are willing to enact? Mr. Bob Barron himself collected signatures for this annexation petition. His signature was notarized indicating that. Mr. Barron brought the original petition into the Escanaba Township office himself on April 12th. He has a vested interest in this outcome. Mr. Barron received a letter from Fahy Schultz Berzich Rhodes on October 12th of 2020 regarding, quote, "Annexation of Territory from Escanaba Township to Cornell Township," close quote. He was elected in November of 2020. You tell me, what was his intended purpose of running for this office? Is it to better our county? Is it to support the townships and their elected officials? Is it to better the lives of all the residents of our county? Or is it to force his personal agenda on all of us, including the Delta County Board of Commissioners? This application is invalid for several reasons. The publications for four weeks had a May 16th, 2023 date as when it, as to when it was going to be submitted. That date then changed to June 20, 2023, on, on May 24th. However, there were no Cornell Township residents listed. That publication went on for two weeks. Finally, on June 7th, there were Cornell Township residents listed. There has not been four successive weeks of proper publications making this petition invalid. Of the 490 signatures from Escanaba Township that Bob Barron, John Meyer, Patty Lankor, and Tim Barron received, 22 are not free holders, which is a requirement. Five are deceased, two are duplicates, 11 are not landowners but want their name removed anyway, 10 signed opposition papers only, and 230 want their name removed per School District of City of Garden City versus Labor Mediation Board, 358, Nish 258, 1959. The proper procedures have been followed to accomplish this removal of all of these names. In addition, within a few short weeks, 42.68% of the families to be annexed have signed opposition paperwork. This is a clear indication of the will of the people. It took the petition circulators 21 months to collect 490 signatures, and only a few short weeks to collect 776 opposition letters. It has been stated there should be a public hearing so the people can show their opposition to the annexation. Rather than that, have a public hearing for the nine landowners to show they have at least 51% support for this annexation, which they do not. Furthermore, in 2018, annexation was removed from the Michigan Constitution Act 4, Section 4, making this issue moot. Several issues will arise, some of which we don't even realize yet. Some of, some that we do know about is the annexed area residents would lose their data service. Cornell Township has opted out of the support, out of supporting the Delta Area Transit Authority. Data stands to lose $7,193 in tax revenue. The township does not levy any millage for the operation of the fire department. It is supported by revenue generated from the township taxes. The current amount, this is, um, this is Escanaba Township. The current amount budgeted by the township for the fire department is $38,000. This could impact some expenditures that the fire department might need and force them to go to outside sources to get the funding to replace possible reductions to their budget. In addition, if the Escanaba Township Fire Department is contacted by the Cornell Fire Department for mutual aid for the proposed annexed area, reimbursement would be lost by Escanaba Township Fire Department due to mutual aid agreements. If a resident of Cornell Township calls for a fire, dispatch will dispatch Cornell Township Fire Department first. Then, if it is deemed, Escanaba Township Fire Department will be called. Some residents live within, within a couple of blocks of the Escanaba Township Fire Department. Now they are going to have to have a fire department coming from miles away to try to fight their fire. If the board passes the proposed annexation, Escanaba Township would lose two trustees and the township clerk, which only leaves the township supervisor and the township treasurer. In addition, the Township Planning Commission would lose two members. The Cornell Township clerk may have increased cost and labor to do change in the election mastercards, border ID cards, and the absentee ballots. Cornell Township may need to hire additional election workers, which would offset any additional funding from the administration fees they would gain from the annexation. All printed maps and boundaries that Cornell and Escanaba Township have, as well as the counties, will need to be changed at a cost. The address signage project is projected to cost Escanaba Township $64,000, which includes the proposed area to be annexed to Cornell. If the proposed annexation is passed by the county, then some of these costs will be passed on to Cornell Township. At present, the project has been put on hold until the proposed annexation issue is resolved. This is a huge safety concern. If the proposed annexation occurred, there would be 114 parcels in Escanaba Township that would have duplicate parcel ID numbers with Cornell. Those parcel IDs in Escanaba would need to be assigned a new parcel ID number. In addition, the lead parcel ID number 007 in Escanaba Township would now have to be changed to 005, which is the Cornell Township ID number for all 246 parcels. Various organizations use the parcel ID number for various reasons, such as wills, deeds, trusts, and mortgage documents. Those landowners affected would need to change those documents to reflect the new parcel numbers. Costs may be incurred by the landowners in order to change the documents if they have the, if they have the documents. Cornell Township has voted against annexation at their September 2022 board meeting. Escanaba Township has voted against annexation at their May 2023 board meeting. The Delta County Township Association has written a letter to the county commissioners opposing the proposed annexation. You have all received a letter dated today from the Escanaba Township Attorney Laura Genovich. I am hopeful you have had time to read it and understand the gravity of your position. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Treasurer Wycov, a little history of the annexation. You mentioned some at your presentation. All right, Commissioner Wycov, you mentioned in your presentation a little bit about the history of annexation in Escanaba Township, what took place. I believe it was beginning of December of 2020 that yourself and the fellow board members were given a copy of that item from the Foster Swift, not Foster Swift, but the Fahy Schultz and Company. And at the December 2020 meeting, it was asked on the agenda, or was on the agenda, about any questions that you would have, and there was no response from the board. Question was asked, as has been mentioned a number of times here, about, is there a possibility for solar in Escanaba Township? And the Chair or your supervisor, the, Tom, Tom, I forget his last name, I know he owns, what's that? Yeah, Rempos, excuse me, don't. Tom Rempos said that no member of the board even answered the question. And comment was made that, no, giving no answer is the same, can be louder than giving an answer. So, and then later in the meeting, under board comments, the, it was trustee Chenier at the time, said that the county, township, excuse me, is going to hire, would have to hire a law firm to stop annexation slash solar. And that's exactly what you've done. You hired the Foster Swift Law Firm in January, and you've been paying thousands of dollars monthly ever since for that service to, for the two specific goals. You actually had them, and I think March of '21, write a solar amendment to the zoning ordinance, which eventually was adopted in November of 2022. But during the period of time of '21 and '22, it was a moratorium to not even do anything about solar.
Mr. Barron, you are wrong. You are wrong.
I haven't finished my statement. Wait.
Hey, I will, I will give you your time, and then I will correct.
I have not finished my statement. I have the floor. I have not finished my statement I have before.
I need order in the room, please, all right? Free to disagree, I apologize, go ahead and finish, and then you can answer, I apologize.
Yes, thank you. Anyway, the, and so this is what's taken place here over the last couple of years. And the ordinance that you did adopt, after it sat around for a year and a half or more, the, uh, was very restrictive, very, very restrictive. It put it at a particular site in the township, a restricted area, is what they call it, some type of area, which totally eliminated anything west of the Escanaba River. The bulk of the property in Escanaba Township, approximately 25% of the property of Escanaba Township is east of the Escanaba River and 75% is west. It was completely cut out. And also, as part of that, the, uh, that was the only place in an overlay area that you could put the utility solar. And there's no part of your solar ordinance that allows for community solar. The county with our airport has actually a solar, a community solar operation. And there's nothing there in Escanaba Township. And then, and so you, basically, it's called the racket of regulatory capture. And Escanaba Township's been doing it for a long time, and you just continued that. Prior to 2020, there was a moratorium that was taking place in 2020 on solar. There was a document that was done by the township with the help of Orion Renewables at the time, and with the, with the idea, Orion Renewables said that they would be willing to pay some of the cost of it. And it was, uh, I have it here, it's a big document, an ad hoc committee, which showed that there wasn't an issue with the solar situation to be proposed for Escanaba Township. So you deliberately did the, uh, regulated this thing out of existence, because it's not viable where you've stuck it. It's, uh, the way your ordinance is written, if an area of 100 acres could be used for solar, the maximum they can use on that 100 acres is 20. The rest of it has to be some kind of buffer zone or what have you. So you made it so it's not economically viable. Now, as far as annexation is concerned in Escanaba Township, there's been, uh, annexation that's taken place before from Escanaba Township, and it was a hostile situation, similar to what this is now. And the hostility was created by the Escanaba Township Board as it has now. The area that was annexed, if you're familiar with the Oak Bluff area, the golf course, the retirement village, basically everything on Tipperary Road West was Escanaba Township. In the 90s, uh, Development Group approached the, led by Mr. Matt Smith Senior, former bank president locally here, came forth and wanted to develop that area as it's been developed here. They went to an Escanaba Township meeting, they were met with, uh, less than a positive attitude, and the, uh, they, they came with the intent to use Act 425, Public Act, which is that the annexation from a township to a city would, would have, uh, there's a sharing of the revenue for the next 40 to 50 years. But because of Escanaba Township's attitude towards these, their idea, similar to what it's done here with the landowners that want to go next to a different township because of your attitude that you have, they created a circumstance where the owners of that property, which they had put together, was all touching Gladstone, had their attorney sent the land saying with the proper paperwork and filed it with the State Boundary Commission, and to this day, with the intent of never working with Escanaba Township again, because of the attitude that they had towards them and their project. They needed to annex Gladstone because they needed sewer water, but they were not met with open arms. So this, this situation is not, this is not the first time Escanaba Township has done these things, and they're continuing their modus operandi. But the, and so it was, the, the Oak Bluff area was annexed to Gladstone, and the Escanaba Township ceased to gain any revenue from this, or it was a very minor, instead of what was, what they could have done. But because of their, the way they treat their property owners, which this property owner was able to do something right, right away, just as the property owners who've done all this work to, for this application of annexation are attempting to do the same thing. But the, what's even, what led from the Oak Bluff annexation was the purchase of some property by, um, across from the Gladstone High School, it's on the Escanaba Township site of M35, known as the Forsberg Property, just a few years later, which was basically, it was rumored that Gladstone was looking to purchase that property, and that potentially was going to be annexed to the city of Gladstone. A simple phone call would have corrected that, but it wasn't done because there was an attitude that we're not going to talk to Gladstone, because they, they got a piece of the township a few years earlier. So the township,
Please remain quiet, please.
But the township itself, the township itself, uh, bought the property to avoid annexation, which never was going to happen because there was no intent for that. It was about Gladstone, it was a simple phone call, 60 seconds we had taken care of it. It wasn't done by the township officials at the time, one of which is still on the township board. The, um, simple phone call would have clarified the situation, and let the township went out and spent money to buy this property in case there might, to prevent an annexation, when in fact, the situation with Gladstone was they were looking for a parcel of land to purchase from their wastewater plant, and the final treatment coming out of the digesters is what's called a sludge or cake or what have you, and instead of putting it in landfills, a better place to spread it on property. So they were looking at the Forsberg property, and a simple phone call would have told it, which I was part of, the phone call would have said, found out, they rejected immediately the committee they had and found a piece up by Perkins. But the township ended up spending $320,000 on this property, which is grossly overpriced, on a rumor. This is Escanaba Township, this is how it operates. And unfortunately, it's continuing that operation now. Thank you. You have any additional?
Oh, yeah.
I need order in the room, please. I need order in the room, please.
Number one, I was not elected until November of 2020, so some of your dates are incorrect. We had a solar moratorium because our, our planning commission was working on a solar ordinance to address all of the concerns that you were at all those meetings, and you heard the concerns that all the citizens had, not nine farmers, farmers or landowners. How many, how many hundreds of people were at those meetings? And they had a lot of concerns that were addressed, namely our groundwater. How many times have people had their groundwater contaminated in the area because of your land, because of you not tilling in the versoprote immediately like you're supposed to?
Do you have any, do you have any questions for the board? I understand what you're saying, but,
No, no, no.
You want to move the process on?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moyles.
It's all right, it's okay.
Mr. Barron, just, he was,
I need it quiet in this room, please.
Extremely derivatory. He's accusing me of a lot of stuff, and I am addressing that because he is wrong. He is 100% wrong. The annexation to Gladstone had to go to the, the Boundary Commission because that was the process. So the, the fact that they sent it down there because they don't want to deal with Escanaba Township is wrong. That's incorrect. Number one, we're not here on solar, we're here on an annexation, so that's very telling because that's exactly what we want to do. You say that it's not viable where we put our solar overlay, it's extremely viable. That's exactly where it should go. We have no, in areas, we don't have even six inches of, of topsoil. We are sitting on rock, and you know very well that if you drill those thousands of holes, 455,000 panels, your little solar overlay that you have at the airport is what, 17,000 panels? This is going to be, this is going to be 455,000 panels. You tell me how many drill holes you have to drill into the bedrock? You tell me that that's not going to contaminate our groundwater if something happens? And are you willing to risk that? Because I'm not. I was voted in. Mr. Moyles says all the time, well, we were voted in by the electors, well, so was I. And you know what? I'm representing my, my people that are, that voted me in. You don't. You're sitting up there for one reason and one reason only.
Let's state, state the facts, please, ma'am. Do you have anything else you want to state? Folks, I need it quiet in this room.
Oh, that's the facts.
We, the board is interested in hearing from you on factual information, and we're very, is there any questions?
I have something else to say.
It's fine.
Mr. Barron said that we have spent thousands of dollars monthly on our attorney Genovich. We have not. Actually, the old attorney costs us, costs us $80,000. We have spent, last, last fiscal year, we were $10,000 less than what was in our budget to spend on our attorney. And we get all of our answers because she's a township attorney, and she has the answers for everything, not just annexation. We did not contact her regarding annexation, we did not contact her regarding solar. We needed a township attorney that could real, deal with township governance. That is all. So she's been hired, she costs us a lot less money, so don't even go there. Just so much of what you say, it, it's, once again, it's Mr. Barron just talking.
Do you have any questions for, or do, do you have any questions for Ms. Mike? Do you have any questions for, uh, Bob, do you have any? Mr. Few? All right, thank you for your time, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I hope you guys do the right thing.
Hey, we're bringing the meeting together, please. Thank you. The next agenda item would be the applic, to receive the application or notice receipt of the application. Any commissioners wish to comment on this? I'll give you the mic. It's the application, uh, receiving or taking note of receiving the application for the altering the boundaries, basically the application of annexation would, I want to know what the commissions, what you would like to do.
Over the last month, this, this, uh, this hit me, I, I didn't know anything about stepping onto the board, and, uh, over the last month, I've tried to put as much thought into this as possible. It's a huge issue, and unfortunately, there's going to be, there's going to be losers tonight. And whether it's the farmers that want to put in the solar that lose, uh, or the people, or if the annexation did go through, the people that are going to be dragged along kicking and screaming basically that they don't want to go. There is, there is no win on this, there's only loss, and the loss is the whole community. This unfortunately has been laid in our laps. We didn't ask for it, we don't want it, but this is, we, we ultimately, there's been a lot of talk, or a few people I should say, that have said that this should go to a vote of the townships. Unfortunately, the law does not, does not give us that. It comes to us, we can't even vote to put it on the ballot, from what I understand, in November. So, like I said, there, there, there is not going to be a win-win situation in this, and I hope everybody understands, stands that, um, we're either, we're either going to vote to support the people that want to put in the solar, or we're going to vote, support the people that want to stay where they're at, they want to stay in Escanaba Township. Uh, I feel bad that this couldn't have been hammered out before it got to us. That's where it should have been done, and in my feeling, it should be a vote between Escanaba Township and Cornell Township, but that's not where we're at, unfortunately. So please, just think and keep in your mind that there's going to be losers tonight, no matter which way you go. And that we have spent the last month, I have spent the last month, and I know everybody else on this board has spent the last month agonizing over this vote because it's not something we feel comfortable in doing, and we're doing the best we can with it. Thank you.
We have the presentation here at the stand of Mr. Matthew Kushner, and I would like to see that, let him make his presentation, and then we can ask questions.
That's not on the agenda. It is?
It's on the agenda.
The agenda is the application to alter boundaries of Escanaba and Cornell Township, so,
There's no presentation issue.
We would make a seat of the application, or no seat of the application. The board has questions, that's fine.
Sorry about that, I'm just talking to housekeeping. I, I said, what's on the agenda is the application to alter the, the boundaries.
Could you use the mic, please?
Yes, of course.
I apologize. What is on the agenda is the, uh, application to alter the boundaries of Escanaba and Cornell Township. So, um, if you have, if the commission has any questions or you want to discuss this, I would like to know how you want to proceed. That's fine, I'm, I'm just checking that with the commission, I'm not, you'd like to see, all right, you're good. Sir, welcome, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner, no apology necessary. My name is Matt Kushner, I'm from Fahy Schultz, we're a law firm, we represent municipalities across the state. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening, and it's also a pleasure to be in a situation where we have so many municipalities together, so it's, it's local governments all doing local government things. Uh, so we do represent the circulator of the application, I submitted my letter, uh, which came with the application for you, it is under the County Commissioners Act, um, MCL 4614 and MCL 4615. As noted, it is a, uh, application for a presentation to the county board and not an election issue. And it requires, of course, 20% of the signatures from resident freeholders, so folks that, that own property. Looking at the signatures, we believe we have enough signatures, uh, which is then submitted to the board, I've outlined those numbers in my letter. There is no clean way to get a denominator, unfortunately. If it was a list of, of, of registered voters, we can go grab that list. If it was just a list of, of individuals who, who, um, own property, then, then we could grab that list. But it's residents and folks who own property, so it's a, it's a bifurcated list, it isn't easy to come by, but I've shown you my math there, looking at the principal residence exemption, uh, for folks who own property, so that's showing that they are a resident and that they own property. Gets us to a, a, a universe of, of folks, uh, and then we, we do some math based on that. So, uh, we believe we need 77 signatures in Cornell Township, we have 102. We believe, worst case scenario, we need 398 in Escanaba Township, of cour, and we have 489. Now, there are some, uh, there's been some discrepancies in the, uh, signatures and the way they were published and posted, because we had to take the individual names and transcribe those into a newspaper. So there were some incorrect transcriptions of individuals' last names, which is of course regrettable. Uh, but when, when made aware of those and able to correct those, we did that, uh, in the subsequent posting. Uh, and looking at even the numbers that Escanaba and their council had put forward, they've asserted, uh, based on their review of the records, it's, uh, 2,050 resident freeholders, their 20% number is 410. Again, we have sufficient signatures, um, even though I think there is one duplicate, right? There are a handful that, um, that don't necessarily qualify for that, but even when we take those off, we have enough signatures from the township. So we do have 20% signatures.
That's an amendment to freehold.
We have, um, posted the, we've published it, first of all. It's running today. It's in today's paper. And it's been published for the four previous, the weeks previous to that. So it's actually been published for five weeks, over the four weeks required by statute. And it has been posted throughout both townships. Uh, it's telling, you know, moving this discussion to June allowed additional postings to be made because businesses opened in that time period. Uh, so it was then able to be posted there for those four consecutive weeks with that additional timeframe. So we have upwards of eight locations within the township, uh, within Esconaba Township. And again, the only allegation, uh, that Esconaba can raise to, to the posting locations is that, uh, it was posted at Commissioner Barron's, uh, home on the truck bypass route. Um, but eight is greater than five, uh, so we do have sufficient number of, of public postings there. The, there's a consistent allegation that signatures should be removed because now there's a, a political games afoot and folks are, are trying to get, get signatures off the list. But it's, it's legally, uh, invalid to remove petitions at this stage. We presented, uh, that case law in the memo, the Corber case, uh, from 1909, says you can't remove it at any stage. And the Rutledge case, uh, is very similar to ours because it also, that, that case involved, um, liquor control and whether or not you can allow alcohol. But it, uh, that procedure also required posting ahead of the decision, just like this procedure. And it was when it was posted that the court examined it and they said, no, you can't remove it simply because once you post it, you've triggered, uh, the process. So the signatures that are on the application that has been presented to the board, are valid and remain on the application. The application isn't misleading. Uh, right on the face of every petition page, it says, uh, that these are resident freeholders and it's to present, uh, the boundary application to the County Board of Commissioners. So it says it right there on its face. The map was included, uh, when it was circulated, so the boundaries that were adjusted, you know, were, uh, available to folks who wanted to examine them. And you, of course, heard from the circulator, Mr. Myron, about how he circulated it. Of course, he went to his neighbors. He chatted with them. He presented the application, answered their questions to the best that he could. Now, can different neighbors have different reasons for signing the application? Absolutely. Um, so it's no surprise to me that, that there's differences of opinion in the community over why they would sign it or what they had chatted about. Also want to address, um, the voting of, of the commission. Now, I've heard a lot about Commissioner Barron tonight. But looking at, uh, at Rule 3.4 of the County Board of Commissioners, it requires mandatory voting on all aspects that come before, uh, the commission. So as Commissioner Peterson pointed out, it's a tough decision that's brought to the board under a statutory process. And that's the duty of his public office, is to consider the application and make a determination on it. And that's the same for all the, uh, commissioners, and that's reflected in your rules. Uh, further, on this particular question, there, there can be no conflict of interest. It's legally impossible because we have a fundamental...
Order and order, please. Let the process play out. I need order in this room. Let him speak.
So as I said, it's legally impossible to have a conflict of interest because this is fundamentally a political question. That's what the Michigan State Supreme Court held in Midland versus the Boundary Commission in 1977. They stated very clearly that the boundaries and whether a, a boundary change should occur is a political question. They stated that there's no vested right in a municipality's boundary. There's no legal interest that any individual has in the boundary of their municipality. So from a legal perspective, you can't have any interest. There's no interest to conflict with because you have no property interest in the municipal boundary. And that's also confirmed by the United States Supreme Court, uh, in a case out of Pittsburgh in 1907, which made the same, uh, reached the same conclusion. So it actually precedes the Michigan Supreme Court's decision in 1977. Uh, additionally, an application like this, why, you know, why is it a political question? Why is it that there can't be a conflict of interest? Well, it addresses lots of different people. It affects several different property owners. We've heard about that tonight. So there isn't one individual. This isn't, uh, this isn't a contract for solar. This isn't a solar development. So there is no property owner who wants to develop for solar, who's getting a benefit, who's then being rewarded and they're, you know, they're, they're sitting on both sides of the table because there's...
Keep it down, please.
There's a whole group of folks who are covered by this, uh, boundary adjustment. And it's very similar to, uh, a rezoning or a zoning application. So if we were to consider this whole area, let's just use the, uh, use the overlay as an example, that's before the commission. If Esconaba Township were to consider rezoning that, and let's say they wanted to make it an agribusiness area, right? Trying to find a way to support their farmers, so they want to permit concentrated feed operations, different, different agriculture. Uh, well, if a, if an Esconaba Township trustee or board member resided within one of those parcels, they would still be able to vote on that zoning question, even though their property is in that area that's getting its zoning changed, that they might be able to take advantage of those new land use rules. It's still a political question of general applicability that applies throughout all those parcels. Uh, so that, that trustee would, would have the ability and should, uh, vote their office and advance the, the policy interests of, uh, in that hypothetical of the township. So it's very similar in that respect because it's such a broad area. There's so many property owners. Additionally, uh, as I kind of, as I landed on, you know, we're advocating that the county approve the application ultimately. We've laid out our reasons for that. Uh, of course, it is ultimately a property rights question. Uh, at this stage of the proceedings, uh, with the application having just been submitted. Now, I've given you my math on freeholders and how many signatures we have. And I think it's good math and I think we have enough signatures. But at the same time, as I said at the top, I recognize the unique circumstance that there isn't a clean list. We can all easily agree, you know, okay, registered voters, there's however many, 14,000 registered voters, whatever the number would be, 20% of that, right? We can't, we can't do that, unfortunately. So taking an opportunity, there's certainly no objection from us if the commission were to take the opportunity to examine the, uh, application in detail and confirm the math that I've presented, uh, confirm the math that Esconaba has, uh, presented. And see that we do have sufficient signatures, uh, on that application. And then, once you've delivered, uh, the, or determined the validity then, then you can move on to the more kind of pressing question of how do you, and, and move forward on the application and whether to proceed, uh, to approve. So, um, in that sense of motion, uh, to accept the application for review and then schedule further, uh, discussion after there's been ability to, uh, come up with that math, discern your, your methods for that calculation, prove your, your percentage of signatures so you could put it on for August 15th for, you know, a future meeting where it gives you enough time to, to undertake that work. Uh, and just a few other points I wanted to make. When considering, uh, a novel issue, this isn't something that comes in front of your commission every day. There, there are going to be costs involved. There, that's not surprising. Uh, every time there's a change in an elected structure, there's costs involved. When a new secretary of state is elected, all the letterhead changes. Uh, when new commissioners come in, websites change and letterhead changes. There's costs in the background to all these changes of our self-government. So it's not surprising that we see those here. And then finally, um, again, as I said, it's a pleasure to be here with different municipalities all coming together. And so we see here, we've heard about the, the townships. And here we have an opportunity, again, in our constitutional structure of government, for checks and balances, uh, which is, I think, one of the reasons that this provision exists in the County Board of Commissioners Act. So I'm happy to take your questions.
Commissioner, do you have any questions for counsel?
I guess I have one.
Okay, hold on. Let me pass you the mic. Um, and I don't know if you can help us with this or not. But tonight there was, uh, a statement brought up about, um, Michigan's constitution removing the annexation thing. Can you, uh, and I know this is short notice, can you expel on that a little bit for us?
Only a little. So, uh, I'm not aware of the particular provision that they're referencing in that comment. Uh, but what I can say is that this is not an annexation. This is a boundary adjustment. So it's technically a different type of proceeding. And it proceeds under a...
We'll have to clarify that.
And it proceeds under a, um, statutory set of rules, right? It's in the, in the County Commissioners Act. So, um, that, that act has not been ruled or determined unconstitutional or that the constitutional amendments have affected it. So I'm not aware of any impact that, um, whatever provision it is that they're citing to would have on the legal basis for the application.
Thank you.
Commissioner View, do you have any questions?
Just a couple of thoughts that maybe you can... We need to accept the application. Is that required of us? Do you accept this application by law? That we have to either accept, you know, just, can I accept it? I kind of read everything you got here and there's a lot of, uh, stuff that I'm not very familiar with because it's a lot of lawyer stuff and stuff I couldn't pick up.
Do you acknowledge the receipt of the application? That doesn't mean we're passing the application.
Well, no, I know. I mean, yeah, well, he's clarifying a little bit, but do we need to acknowledge that we received it?
So I think it's good practice. Um, there isn't a procedure in the act stating that you have to take this step, then this step, then that step. Um, the statute is very terse, so it, it leaves, uh, some room for your own procedures. Having a, a clear acceptance of the application then establishes that for the record. So it, it adds an element and a layer to provide some clarity where the statute is signed.
Yeah, well, I, I highlighted, it says, "This commission is therefore obligated to accept the application."
Correct. That's my position. I believe we have sufficient signatures that it's a valid application to be, uh, accepted by the commission.
You mean, what happens if nobody makes a motion to accept it and it gets accepted? It just, is it done for?
No, I wouldn't say that, um, but I wouldn't speculate on, you know, what the outcome of, of that could be. It would seem to me if there was no vote, then it's a pending item of business in front of the commission until the commission acts.
So, so this is different. Like if I make a motion, I don't get support for the motion.
It's a debt. Correct.
This doesn't fall under that criteria.
Correct, yeah. I would say it's different.
Where is that written?
Well, it's in the statute in that it's an application from the 20% of the freeholders. To, so to use your analogy, if, um, if the commission were to simply, uh, accept it and not second it, as you say, uh, then that would overrule the statutory mechanism. What the statutory mechanism does is provide the freeholders and residents of the townships to bring something to the county and require them to review and act on. If you were to simply, oh, we're just going to pretend that doesn't exist, well, where's the will of the people that's been expressed on the application?
Okay, so we probably, in our best interest for legal terms, make, do a motion to acknowledge that we have this application on file. And then the next step would be, what would the motion be to turn it down or to accept it after that? I mean, because I'm kind of the one...
That's fine. I just, whatever you're asking, it makes sense.
I just want to know how we go about this because...
We have legal counsel for these questions?
Yes, where's Lauren?
I can't use legal counsel, but my, my problem is...
I need it quiet in the audience, please. We got a process. We'll follow the process.
Commissioner View, I have a statement I'd like to make. Can we, um, go into closed session to address our legal opinion that was given to us on May 12?
We...
We already addressed that.
It's not an amendment to the agenda. I'm asking if now can we review our...
I don't know. I, I, I thought I put it up forward right in the beginning.
But I'm not an amendment to the agenda. Putting it as part of the agenda, the motion, I think.
Well, just, just to elaborate because I, I really want to make sure we do this right. I do not want to stretch this out for months and months or weeks or weeks. I really want to make sure that if we can do anything tonight, I think it's a, if... My gut feeling and what the people have given me here, it's something that they're looking forward to us making a decision for on tonight. And now you bring up a whole bunch of other legal things that we should check. The documents, the signatures, the addresses. And when I read your thing, I, I highlighted a bunch of things. And I'm not going to go through all of them. And I just thought to myself, them are, I'm going to believe all of that. All the figures, all the facts, all the things. But I highlighted two things. One in the beginning that what, what most of the people brought up that I thought was really important. Second paragraph, you as the attorney, further, we encourage all commissioners to vote it in favor. So we have the option to listen to the people or vote in favor, is how I'm taking it. The last page. Last sentence, last page. We encourage each commissioner to vote in its favor. So if we agree with everything in here and don't challenge it and save the township and the county and all this money and move this forward and it gets voted either down or up, it's over, basically, on what's happening here. Because we have the free will to vote what was spoken here tonight, our conscience of what the people want us to do. Even though you mentioned all this other stuff, we still have that. We just accept that it's true and then we vote what the people have said.
Okay, I'll...
My suggestion is we accept, we acknowledge application and receipt. That does not mean we are accepting any annexation. We, as a commission, will acknowledge that we have received the application and then we can vote. Whether you're talking, but I need it, please, quietly, let us get through this before you pass a judgment on it, all right? There's, there's a lot of information coming at people, but we will get through the process. We are acknowledging receipt of the application, but I don't want to drag this out either. I would like to hear from each commissioner and then we'll move. Uh, Mr. Hold. Mr. View is saying that we're obligated according to this. We will, do I have a motion to receive the application or acknowledge receipt that's not accepting anything? All right? Do I have a motion on that to acknowledge receipt of the, uh, the application?
I'll vote that we acknowledge that we received it.
Commissioner View has motioned that we will acknowledge receiving the application. Supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion. All right. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Kuschel did mention, uh, if you heard, you accept the application for review. Now, there's, and, uh, I keep hearing the will of the people here, but this, what about the will of the people who have been making this effort and have had to, uh, have had their property rights severely infringed by an outright taking?
They are the few.
They, uh, they therefore are being rejected here. Uh, I think the exception, to accept the application for review and to, uh, to see if everything's been properly done is the correct thing to do for those that have worked very hard to get this done. It seems that we have...
Quiet, please, in the audience. I understand this is a motion issue. Let the man speak. We're not going to rush through anything, I promise you.
Well, anyway, what we need to do, I believe we need to take this application for review. That does nothing or accept it, uh, going forward, that it's for review to see that all that's been presented is correct. That it should be a minimum, what should be owed to the landowners that have put to... That should be a minimum, what should be owed to the landowners that have put this together and done the effort that they have. And this falls right in line with what we did two weeks ago in the upholding of the constitution, and especially the Second Amendment, because of red flag laws. The upholding of the constitution is, and by doing so, is personal property rights are from God. They're not from that. So, and that's what we are sworn in our oath of office to do. And so, that's where we should be working from. I know Commissioner Moyle has talked about this being an emotional issue. This issue has to be settled according to reason, not according to emotion. And the facts need to be reviewed, to make sure that they are correct facts, and that all the people are represented, because we are not a democracy. We, it's not a, we are a representative, a representative constitutional republic, which is the rule of law. And that's what we're here for, that's what we're elected for. A democracy is mob rule. And that's partially what we're hearing, especially when I keep hearing the comments about emotional. Emotional is part of mob rule, not of reason. And we are a set of laws that are set up in order that all people are represented, not those that are yelling the loudest or whatever in our, this is about the rule of law. And why my fellow commissioners, that's, we took an oath of office to that. That is our guide, that is our blueprint, and that is our contract that we have, that we were elected to, by the people, to follow. Now, whether, all understand that, but that is the fact of being elected to this in a representative constitutional republic. It is the rule of law. And so, I get, what I'm hearing is that, wanna hurry up and push it off to the side? No. It's the rule of law takes time, this needs to have its time, and let this emotional aspect go run its course, and let the rule of law take place. Because what you're wanting to rush to do is to keep these landowners in a punishing situation when you've, all five of us, two weeks ago, said we wanted to, made ourselves a sanctuary county, protecting the consti, upholding the constitution and the Second Amendment rights, but yet we turn around and we turn that into a fallacy by what we're, could be turning it into a fallacy with what we're doing here, because we have said that we don't look at the whole constitution, we don't look at the whole set of rights that we have. We are using a buffet where we pick and choose. That is not our jobs, that is not our oath of office, that is not what we should be doing here. We should be looking at this from the aspect of the rule of law, and look at what these individuals, what has taken place, the effort they've made. This emotional aspect of it needs to be, run its course, and let the time take place, let it be reviewed, and all of the accusations, all else that's been thrown forth before this has been presented, needs to be settled. It needs to be put to bed and set aside, and that's where accepting the application for review, we're going very long ways through it. It's not gonna take a short time to do this. There's a lot of work that has to be done in this in order for it to be done correctly. And Mr. Kuschel mentioned possibly the August 15 meeting. If that, if it's ready by them for further discussion, so be it. But I don't, I doubt if we'll be ready for the July meeting of 18, July 18, because we don't, we only have one meeting next month. So, and it may take more than this. There is a huge amount that's involved in here. And to just cast it off because we are emotionally driven by what the crowd is doing here is not doing our duty and not upholding our oath of office. I can't emphasize that enough. That is what our job is. We need to realize that is what it is. Not, not falling to the will of the mob situation, of democ, democracy being expressed here.
Wow, he called us a mob.
We need to look at this from this perspective of what our job is.
Democracy is the rule.
Quiet, the audience, please.
Commissioner View would like to speak. I need you to be quiet, please, come to order.
Wow.
I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson, I apologize.
That's fine, no worries. As I said earlier, I've been agonizing over this for a month. I've been thinking about it, I've been researching it. Any decision I make tonight is not, not on feelings, not on emotion. The other thing that I have to state, and no disrespect to my fellow commissioner here, but everybody has those same constitutional rights, to have their properties and use their properties in the fashion they see fit. And so, like I said, I have, I have no emotion in this, other than the fact that it's been twirling on my mind. And, and like I said, he said, we did just pass a Second Amendment sanctuary status. That was for the benefit of the whole population of the county. And I understand, I do feel that Commissioner Barron's property rights have been affected, have been infringed on. On the other hand, though, that does not give me the right to infringe on other people's property rights. So, as we move forward, that's what I will be looking at, is everybody's property rights, everybody's fundamental right to enjoy their property and their lives and their livelihood. So, that's just where I stand, and I want, this is, this is not an emotional situation for me. It's a, to me, I look at it as constitutional rights for everyone. Thank you.
Commissioner View, do you have any comments or just pass them?
I have another comment.
Go ahead.
I just have one question for you. Who is paying for your services?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Folks, I need order in the room, please. I need order in the room. Thank you. I need to have the commissioners get their opportunities to speak. Commissioner View, go ahead.
No, answer the question.
I'm happy to answer the question, which, as I said in my letter, were retained by the circulator of the petitions. You heard from him tonight, you'll, I mean, you'll see John Myron's signature on the vast, vast majority of those petitions.
Bobby.
Thank you.
That was not an answer.
Stop, please, stop.
This is boundary changes, I guess. I thought it was an annexation.
That's fair, colloquially, yeah.
Okay, I mean, because there's so many plays on words, it makes it confusing for, especially a new commissioner like me. And one of the things that I wanted to do, I don't wanna be misinterpreted by making the motion to accept the application. The application means nothing to me, except that we're gonna get going on this issue, which I'd like to finish it tonight, and if I thought we could've talked to our attorney, I think the board would've been well informed on some of the issues that the board and the county has to look at by not settling this in certain ways. So, I don't wanna be misquoted. I made the motion, I want this to move forward as quick as possible. I believe everything in here, just because I want it to go forward, but I feel very slighted, because I don't have the representation I need on this seven-page document from our attorney, and I can't utilize it tonight. And that's my only point.
Yeah, and I hear those concerns, and you raised them before. Appreciate your stance on my submission, and I'm happy to answer any question that you've highlighted. Feel free.
There's a lot.
To, feel free, certainly. To analogize to another type of application situation, we use, I use that example of, what if this annexation area was a rezoning? Well, one of the things that can happen under the zoning enabling act is when there's a rezoning, or any zoning change, there can be a referendum on that. And they collect signatures, and they submit them to the county, or to the township or zoning authority clerk. So it's a very, it's a similar process, and that process has a little more procedure and statute, and it provides for, exactly as we're proceeding here tonight and the recommendation, an application of that nature would also be accepted, they receive it, right? They receive the application. Then, there's an obligation to confirm that there's a sufficient signatures that meet the statute, and then if the application is confirmed, then it moves forward for, in that case, it goes onto the ballot, but in this case, it would move forward for a decision. So, coming back to your question, I think it's very appropriate then, to accept the application, take that opportunity to review the signatures just as you would under a zoning petition, and then, then move forward with your decision on the application, having done that due diligence.
Commissioner. Do you have any additional questions?
Well, I appreciate the answer, but who's going to look at the signatures? Do we hire an attorney to do that? Is that, I mean, does the county clerk do that? I mean, there's a lot into this, and I think Elspetha Township did a lot of research, and then whose figures and whose ideas or tools are we gonna use?
Correct. And I think that's one of the questions that you could resolve in the interim. I don't think you have to hire an attorney, because it's not a legal question, it's a data question. So the county folks, and, you know, we've grabbed our information from the equalization office, whether you appoint the clerk or some other official to spearhead determining the proper method and determining the proper numbers, that's a commission decision on procedure.
Why, I can't ask my attorney?
Okay, John, get the microphone, so people can hear, I need to enter the microphone.
I hate to monopolize, but I need to get information. If I cannot ask my attorney questions tonight, I'm gonna utilize, thank you, Mr. Barron, for your attorney to answer. But if, if, if the signatures are not to 20%, is this a dead deal? 20% signatures is a-
Less, less.
If it's not up to that spec, or any of these posting, is it just thrown out, we're done with it?
Correct.
Okay, so what we're doing tonight is accepting the application, holding off, to make-
We have a motion on the floor.
We've got a motion on the floor.
Acknowledge receipt.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. So, if the thing, if the criteria doesn't fit the acknowledgement of this application, then it's a, it's a done deal.
Correct. And if, if in the unlikely circumstance that were a conclusion, then you could potentially see it a situation where at a future meeting you would then address, you know, this was our math, these are the numbers, the application was received and reviewed and determined to be insufficient.
Mr. Melon.
I have a question. You're saying there's 20%? Where's the other 80% that didn't sign? That kinda tells me that they didn't want it.
So, I mean, 20% is in statute, and you always have thresholds to begin action, right? To move something forward. You never get 100% of anything, even when you have an election, you never have 100% of votes going for one candidate, and you never have 100% of the people voting, because only a certain percentage of people will even register to vote, and then only a certain number of those registered voters will bother to show up to vote. So I appreciate the question. It's the procedure that's laid out in statute. There's other thresholds and other statutes. For example, the new marijuana statute has a 5% votes cast for governor in the last election. That's the threshold required to circulate a petition. So, different statutes have different provisions on what can trigger the procedure. This is fairly-
But as a commissioner, I represent 100% of the citizens, not 20%.
Correct. Absolutely. And the statute brings the application to your committee for consideration, and it's on the reasons presented, and the arguments made.
Thank you, sir, very much. And do you have any additional questions for this gentleman? All right, Mr. Barron.
And when it comes to these, this application for annexation, it comes to other petitions, as Mr. Kuschel has stated here, that's what our system does. It doesn't have to say, go out and say, we have to get X amount to be able to bring this before the people. An example, these five commissioners here, three signatures, and you could run through this office. Now, what, districts average about 7, 7,400 people, so what happened to the other 70, 7,397? That's, it's, it's an argument that hasn't very much basis in reality, while we run. We petitions, applications go forth, they require so much, it's been, it's been done, and this has been done here, and therefore, it should be accepted for review. If it does not meet all of the criteria, then it dies on the vine. But it's, every application, petition, needs to be reviewed, comes into the county clerk's office, it isn't the whole population coming in there, it's a percentage, or a number, a number that are needed. So I think this is a circular situation, and not pertaining to what actually is, takes place in our society and our system.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, made by Commissioner View, and a support made by Commissioner Peterson, to acknowledge receipt of the application.
Can we have the motion read?
I just, I just said it, you made the motion to acknowledge receipt of the application. Commissioner Peterson seconded that. And once we do that, we can decide what direction you wanna go. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt? All right, well, if you can, use the floor still.
I would like to see Commissioner View rescind his motion, and we support like Commissioner Peterson, and change it to accept application for review. Let's do what the normal procedure, let's take it fast. That takes care, that takes, takes care of this for now, and allows the process to continue with steps that are put forth regarding the statute. It's part of the County Board of Commissioners Act. This is what we've worked under here. So I would ask that that be the case.
Please, folks.
All right. Any additional comments? I haven't spoken on this yet, and I think I'm gonna surprise quite a few of you. I would ask that you would listen to what the commissioners, I know you have your opinions, we're interested, we wanna hear it, and I've learned a terrific amount this past month. I've also had my family threatened, and I'm, I would like to be able to speak uninterrupted and listen to what I'm saying. Okay? Because I don't think I know more than anybody here, and I don't think I'm, there, the few are in grand eyes, or, you know, the many have to serve the few. That's not why I went into office. We have procedure that we have to follow, and we will follow them one way or another, all right? Are you, you're willing to, all right, we have the motion, we have the support, I'm not seeing any willingness to budge on that, on rescinding it?
I don't know what the difference was, so I-
Okay, here's, the applicant, we are acknowledging receipt of the application. Okay, that is the motion on the floor with support. Commissioner Barron is talking about is receiving the application for review. All right, very good. All right. Let me, give me a roll call, please, when acknowledging the receipt of the application.
Melon.
No.
View.
Yes.
Barron.
Okay, so there's some confusion on the floor. This is simply acknowledging that we got an application, that's all. Okay, do you understand? So, if that's fine, you want to still, we are acknowledging that we got an application, it does not mean that we're moving the application through to approval. That's why we need you to understand the procedure. We are simple, we are simply saying as a commission that we have received this application, we acknowledge it. It does not pass the application on. Okay, so try that again, please, roll call.
Melon.
No. Yeah. Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moyle.
Yes.
So, we have acknowledged-
The application, that we've received it. Now, I would like a chance to talk to this, and I would like to respectfully- Now, I would like a chance to talk to this, and I would like to, I respectfully request that I do it uninterrupted. This is an emotional issue, but it is not emotion that is driving what I'm going to do or how I do this, and I'm, I'm not, I asked to be here. Everyone in this commission asked to be here, all right? And I, I, I don't feel good about not being able to support a friend of mine on this, because I want to see people succeed. I think the twenty-six landowners have been bandied around, but if we do this and we pull some poor bugger with, that doesn't wanna go, what, constitutional rights are for everybody, we, they're, they're interpretively different as far as what we perceive as obtaining the blessings of liberty upon our posterity, and it says it right in the preamble of the Constitution. I cannot in good faith, and this is bucking the hell out of me, I cannot in good faith cast a vote which is gonna take a duly elected trustee out of a position because the people put them in. I'm not, I don't, please, if you don't, thank you, but you don't need to applaud. I would love to be able to see, my friend and, and other people, the other twenty-six landowners, if you are being held up from using your property by a decision the township makes, then you need to consider suing the township in a class action motion. Let each commissioner speak their piece, leave their damn families out of it. I'm imporing you that. My nine-year-old daughter doesn't have any business here. I asked to be here. It's killing me to say this, but I cannot support this based on the fact that my vote will tear somebody out of an office that you put in the office, but I, I, I wholeheartedly support a class action motion so that those twenty-six people can enjoy their property and the fruits of their liberty based on that. No matter what we do tonight, somebody's getting screwed. So, do you have any other comments?
Something for this commission, what you wanna do? Commissioners? Mr. Melon, or, Mr. Melon? Or View?
What options are we looking at now?
Do, what do you want to do with, we received the application?
I wanna talk to my attorney.
Yes.
Mr. Baron.
We passed this, uh, motion to accept the application, that we received it. The, uh, next logical point is to, we, uh, make a motion for review. I tried to bring that forth, but it didn't, it didn't take place. We've accepted the application, that, that we've, we've accepted, we received it, and I believe the logical motion is for review, to see that if it is fulfilled or not fulfilled, but, but it claims to have done. If that, if those twenty-six landowners aren't worth that effort, then what are we worth? Because if we say that we, uh, uh, we, I really admit this, that we are, uh, they are in a, a difficult situation, that, well, let's just go ahead and sue. This was put in statute and play in eighteen fifty-one, so that people, and so that local government could do something here, instead of in the courts, instead of in, uh, Lansing, but by deferring this, to saying, "Well, just go ahead and sue," that's not a good answer, it's a, it's a very poor answer, is that we have the responsibility here, and yet, we've accepted the, accepted it, uh, received, accepted receiving this, now it's our obligation to have it reviewed, not, uh, say, "Oh, sue, do whatever," instead of completing what we have here. It's right there in our very statute. Is this something that we turn over to Lansing and say, "All right, they know better how to take care of it here," and we skip our fiduciary responsibility here locally because we can't take care of it? We're afraid of it? We're afraid of, of, uh, the response from a few people instead of standing up for those that are, are being, uh, uh, relieved and abused of their property rights where they live? I, 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 same on our fellow, my fellow commissioners, what, what, what are you afraid of? This is your job here. I mean, you just lock this thing out here in this crowd? Really? I mean, uh, that, that's emotionally driven, um, and, uh, it's, it's not what we're here to do, we're here to decide this thing on reason. And I'm not hearing reason here. Go off and do something else, I don't wanna take responsibility for my job. This is our job. Is there difficulties at time? Yes, there is, but that's part of the territory we've, we've, uh, chosen, you know? And, uh, I believe the motion that should be made is put it for review, and then bring back to the board after the review is complete, and I'll make that motion. We'll see if there's anyone else here that could back that up with a second. If not, then we've, uh, we are not doing our duty. Why, why, what are we doing here? Somebody else can take care of it, it's us, fine. I've made the motion, is anyone, uh, got him strong enough to stand up and say, "Let's put it for review"?
Please be quiet. We have a motion on the floor, by Commissioner Baron, do I have a second to this, to have it reviewed?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, you can make a...
Mike, Mike...
Make the motion for discussion, or you can second it for discussion purposes only.
So, I can't talk unless it's seconded?
That's it. Yeah, you can make, I mean, you can make a motion for, uh, to second for group discussion. You're not supporting the motion, you're talking about group discussion, so you can't, you can't go into discussion until...
I just wanna verify why, why I did what I did.
We're, we're still in discussion. Well, we haven't gotten to that point yet, we have a motion on the floor, we would need a second to discuss it. Okay, I need it, please, folks, please be quiet. Ask your neighbor to be quiet, please, we're trying to get through a process. So, I have a motion by Commissioner Baron. I need a second to continue discussion.
Can you use a second?
I could for discussion if nobody else wants to talk about it, because I, I... Folks, I need you to respect the process, please.
Not when you're not following rules.
Sir, we are following Robert's rules, I need you to respect the process, please. So, we have a motion on the floor, do I have a second for, for discussion purposes? All right. Sit right here then, if there's not, you're not gonna get a second for it. Do you have anything else to say, sir?
Is there another motion?
Why do we want to, uh, do what we're doing to its, instead of landowners as the mission has been here, and yet, we won't even give them, uh, the review that's necessary of what they've worked on? Why is that? Why is, why are we so gutted with something?
Oh, my gosh. Whoa.
I mean, we're, we're denying our jobs, we're denying our office, we don't wanna do it, so, uh, the crowd is giving us a, uh, what's giving priority, apparently, your marching orders. It's not what you're here for, but if this is what's, if this is what's, it's come to, then you're succumbing to that, so, then let's just throw out the rule of law, and then we'll become a full-fledged democracy and let the mob rule, let's see what, let's see what the mob yells here.
I tell you what, now, have the room cleared if you don't follow the procedure, and according to the State Open Meetings Act, I don't wanna do that, but I've got to have order here. All right, I'm gonna second this for, uh, conversation, sir. Hold on, please, but I'm gonna challenge what you've said, so I second it for, uh, for discussion purposes only, all right? I, I need you, may I?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't, all right? We have a motion, we have a second, we have additional discussion, we're not voting on anything. Okay, I, I, I take umbrage, I, I understand what's at stake, and, um, my decision is driven by the fact that if there's a process in place, I might not like the process, but it was put in there by the, the people, I understand that twenty percent of the electorate could move things over. Well, I told you what I need to support this, I would need a public hearing in Eskenaba Township, a public hearing in Cornell Township, a joint meeting between both townships, and to hear from fifty-one percent of the electorate. That, that, I understand that there's a law that was developed in the eighteen fifties, and I, I do firmly believe, and I will reiterate, that I think that the property rights of the twenty-six landowners have, have not been necessarily respected, they've been trampled on. But this is not fear of, of the, you know, I'm not afraid of a crowd that, I, not at all, this has nothing to do with fear. I, I can't support something based on, I think you, this is the wrong way to do it, and, and the law, I don't know what provides us the right way to do it. So, if you want, anybody else wants additional discussion, but I'm, I'm not doing this because I'm afraid of a, a surly audience, you're not that surly. All right, very good.
Commissioner View?
No.
Commissioner Peterson?
Okay, I'm just gonna reiterate what I said earlier. I have no emotions in this whatsoever, except that there are more than twenty-one people's property rights at stake here, and I am looking, I am not shirking my duty, I am not running, I am trying to make a decision that best affects everybody in the township, not just a small amount of people. As I said earlier, do I think that they, uh, have, have good reason to be upset, good reason to wanna change things? I kinda think they do. But, at this point in time, it's too big of a bite at the apple, and there's too many people that do not want to go along with this, that are gonna be trapped up and taken away, taken with it, and that is where I'm going to make my decision.
Thank you. Um, the, the point I wanted to get across was, the attorney opinion says, we are obligated to set, to accept the application, it does not say review. I have no other legal aspect or knowledge on what the review part would add to the liability of the county, the citizens, or the township, and I just didn't wanna take that step forward right now, not knowing that. I'm probably willing to review it, but not at this point, because I could talk to our counsel about what happened. And the other thing is, I don't know very many people that enjoy more government and less freedom, because that's, that's my stance here, less government, more freedom. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, any, any other discussion, uh, conversation?
We still have a decision to make here, and we need to, we need to be looking at the rights of all the citizens of, uh, Commissioner Peterson, uh, what loss of property rights by annexation would do me? It would, uh, curious as to what that is, because this is a gain of property rights, those that would remain in Eskenaba Township are the ones that are gonna ha- uh, continue to have theirs lost. Excuse me, those that would be, um, would move, whether they, uh, have decided to move or not, would be gaining property rights. There's not a loss here, there's a gain that could be had. Excuse me, but, let's take a look at the, uh, the writers of our constitution, of our Declaration of Independence. I know it's something that, a part of its tribe doesn't care for whatsoever, but it's something that we live by. Uh, back when the, the, uh, Declaration of Independence was written, we're talking single-digit of the population of the colonies that wanted to separate from Great Britain and become independent. The amount of colonists who did not wanna go was somewhere in excess of fifty percent, very similar to what we have right now in the situ- in this discussion. But yet, when the, the War for Independence was won, uh, the Declaration of Independence hadn't been, uh, written and signed before that, and then the Constitution after the War for Independence, they didn't go running back to England, they stayed there. They, for the most part, stayed in the, in the, uh, colonies, became the United States to enjoy those freedoms. And yet, we're speaking here like the loyalists to Great Britain, that we don't wanna do this, we don't, uh, we'd rather not have our freedoms. And that, that, and that is completely wrong, it's completely against what our foundation is. This is who we are. If, if this is what we're, if we're not gonna stand up for this, what value are we anymore? We, we, if, if we think the con- the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution are nothing, then we are nothing. Because it's made this nation, from what it was, a small minority, uh, went out and with an idea and a dream, a great deal of determination, and created this nation, which made it the most prosperous, the most uplifting nation in the entire history of the world. It brought the prosperity of the entire world up. It brought forth liberty, freedom, and with freedom leads to prosperity, and that's what exactly has happened. But what we have here is, we have a tyrannical situation where the depression, depression of the people's rights leads to tyranny, and that's what we have going on in Eskenaba Township. This would simply be solved by them, by leaving the property owners to use their property, but they've doubled down on this, and that's been presented, has been presented by the Treasury being up here, again and again and again. They have done this.
Better than that than autocratic status.
You calling a question, Mr. View?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on, will we?
It's up to you.
We basically motion, uh, for discussion, to review the application.
We excited, Alex. Gonna refer to the parliamentarian?
Yes, a question for the parliamentarian, please.
Question is called...
We are, I gotta wait for this question, I'll relay it to you guys. Pardon me? Go ahead.
My question is that when a question, when it, is, when a question is called, I believe there has to be a vote of the board to, uh, dispense with the discussion. And the parliamentarian is checking in.
We're waiting to see what the rule is, if they have to vote because they started in discussion. Baron, keep switching.
Okay, the motion to call the question, or the previous question, um, has to be seconded, and it has to pass by a two-thirds vote.
So, Commissioner View called the question, we would need a second, and then we need a two-thirds vote, or three out of five. So, do we have a second to Commissioner View's call of the question? Okay, so we have, the question is called, this is referring to calling a question, uh, roll call, please.
Melon.
No.
View.
Yes.
Baron.
No.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moya.
Baron?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes.
Alright, the question has been called, it passes, will they, yes or no?
Now that's what's on the call.
Of the question.
So that means you have to have a vote now?
Okay, alright.
Do you understand what we were doing here?
Yeah, we were calling the question.
I think no one doesn't understand.
Alright, Commissioner?
I thought we were voting.
I'm calling the question. Which is an end of debate, and that would, end of discussion.
End of discussion. We're voting on end of the discussion.
Oh, okay.
Not on, not on the.
Okay. Just the end of question.
Then I'll change it to, yes.
Alright, if Commissioner Mellner changes his vote, then we would have four out of five. Um, we have, the question has been called, it has been passed, so discussion would end. Um, in referring to, uh, whether to review this application or not, what is the pleasure of this commission?
We already made a motion.
Yeah, we've ended discussion, please, so you're, you're correct, we're trying to get through the position, or the procedure, without making any mistakes, so there's gonna be people trying to understand what's going on, nobody's trying to slight anybody, or put you in the dark. So, uh, we've ended discussion, this vote would be on whether to review this application or not. Alright, we need a roll call. This is again, to review the application or not.
Mellner?
No.
View?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
And Moyle?
No.
Okay, folks, we will have a general public comment next. You get three minutes to, take five minutes. We are in recess. Ladies and gentlemen, we will come back to order, please. We appreciate your cooperation on this, we will have general public comment and commissioners' concerns. So I need you to return to your seat, please, and cease conversation. The meeting of the Board of County Commissioners is back in order. You will be given three minutes for general public comment. Your comments, please, I need it quiet in the room. Can we please cease conversation? Thank you. You get three minutes to address the board, please address the board. Say who you are, where you're from, refrain from any personal attacks, if you would. And then we'll have commissioners' concerns. You get general public comment, please, state your name and where you're from.
Hi, Bonnie Hucker from City of Eskenaba. Um, just a Thomas Jefferson quote for you, which I think is very telling. So rightful liberty is unobstructed action according to our will, however, within limits drawn around us by equal rights of others.
Thank you, ma'am. General public comment. You wish to address the commission, please come up, state your name, and thank you.
My name, my name is Christine Durwin, I live in Cornell. Um, you know, I'm in Eskenaba Township. And I want, I wanna remind all of you that if I own 10 million acres of land, or one acre of land, I still only have one vote.
Thank you, ma'am. General public comment. General public comment. You wish to address the commission, please come up, state your name, you have three minutes. Everyone will get a chance to speak.
Good evening, Kelly Vangenhoven, City of Eskenaba. Commissioner Moyle has made several comments tonight regarding his family being threatened, and has both asked and demanded his daughter and family be kept out of politics. Exactly one year ago today, Commissioner Moyle created a video smashing a cupcake with the word taxes written on top of it. Something he hammered on regarding my statement for possibly increasing the City of Eskenaba's tax rate before the last election. Which included a spot where his daughter licks the frosting after he proceeds to smash the cupcake. Many times during the election, Commissioner Moyle included his daughter in his posts, his events, his photos, etc. I am sure they were meant with the best of intentions. I agree, families should be off limits in politics. During the election, Commissioner Moyle's family and close allies repeatedly created and perpetuated lies about me and my family. They harassed myself, my husband, my family, and libeled my business online. People who have stood up and voiced differing views than Commissioner Moyle have had their employers called by Commissioner Moyle's ex-wife to threaten to have their businesses added to a blacklist or a boycott list if those who spoke out were not terminated. Commissioner Moyle and his supporters have repeatedly called myself the loser in the election. It is true, I did not garner enough votes to sit in a commission's seat. I have acknowledged that many times. However, we need to remember more people in District Four voted against Commissioner Moyle, rather than for him. I would highly encourage you, Commissioner Moyle, that if you want your family kept out of politics, which I truly believe you do, quit putting them in these places to begin with. From now on, I would encourage everyone to just take a deep breath. Everyone, stop attacking each other. This is enough, enough is enough. Thank you.
General public comment.
I was not going to say anything, but this is the place where we are not coming for gossip, and share our emotional, uh, history or future. This is the place we are together for Eskenaba and Cornell Township annexation. And we have a reason to be here, not just for conversation, for gossip.
Thank you, general public comment. General public comment, you have three minutes.
Barbie Claremont, Eskenaba Township. First of all, I believe, uh, the board, this board meeting may have made history to help Michigan restore the rights of the people. So I guess Mr. Baron does do good. This was your out. The cease and the desist was your out of this entire thing. Michigan Constitution, Article 7, Section 20. The legislator shall provide by law for the dissolution of township government whenever all the territory and all organization, organized township include within the boundaries of the village or the villages. Notwithstanding, oh, I don't even wanna read that. Okay, I'm gonna read something else. Please take final notice that it is my wish and many others that gone and gave Baron his cease and desist, our wish and order and demand that all trustees and servants and all agents are to immediately restore trust in township boundaries. Dissist all administrative movements and annexations. Cease application of any and all government resources of annexation. Revert to law pursuit, to constitutions, and nullify any legislative statute or executive rule, not within law form. It remains final demand that all trustee, servants, and agents and bar members immediately stop blocking and interfering with the people's inherited rights, God-given rights, including any reserved rights of the people. Any man or woman who decides to suppress this notice agrees to pay $100,000. And any disputes by the public officials to private actors who are bound to contract to the 50 states of the United States Constitution agrees to have these matters heard before the arbiter of mine and theirs, choice and boundary thereof. Furthermore, if you believe any of the above claim and are untrue, or that you have the authority to harm, infringe, upon the rights of the free people, please provide that constitution provision that grant you such privileges. All responses must be submitted by affidavit sworn under the penalty of perjury immediately upon receiving this notice. And you agree, all acknowledgement, all statements in this notice to be true and fact. Further, you agree that you are acting with full knowledge, intent, and malice by trespassing on the people's inherited rights. And that no court shall be able to inhere this matter, but it shall stand as true, the evidence in all courts of record.
We appreciate your time. General public comment. General public comment, you wish to address the board.
Hey, good evening, everybody, Dave Adamity, Will's Township. Thank you, everybody, for showing up. Remember, this is our opportunity to speak. And I don't think that we're an angry mob. Mob rules, I don't buy that. We're here because this is our opportunity to get in touch with you folks, communicate. But after this meeting's over, we should continue to be neighbors, look out for each other. The end of the meeting's the end of the meeting. We might not like what you guys do as commissioners, but that's it. It's nothing personal. Um, as far as anybody being harassed in the community, as always, as I've said from almost every meeting I've been to, if somebody is being harassed, come find me. There are ways to deal with that legally, we can help you out. Uh, we don't wanna see anybody harassed. Um, whatever's going on with your family, Commissioner Moyle, I apologize, I wish it was something I could've done about that, I don't wanna see anybody's family threatened, whether it's Ms. Vangenhoven or anybody else in this room, or this county. There are thousands of residents in this county, not 26. So when we make these decisions, we hope they're based on good, sound decisions, and not on anyone's emotion. Including the commissioners. I'd also like to say that, you know, we passed the resolution last meeting, everything went well, but there was a couple inaccuracies. Mr. Peterson, I'd like to like you, but there is a due process for the red flag laws. I'm a 20-year veteran police officer, I have looked at it, there is a process. It's not just arbitrary. And I did speak with Ms. Ashley at the end of the last meeting, I'm not aware of any threats to her, I also heard you mention that. If we're gonna get forward, we gotta be honest. We can't push a false narrative, no matter what that narrative is, no matter how it pushes our point. This is about being honest. That resolution was gonna pass, there's no reason for that. Um, if you guys want us to have faith in you, you gotta show us why we need to have faith in your decisions. We may have seen a little bit of that tonight, so I hope that's the case. And again, guys, it's not personal, I hope no one is tracking you, or following you around, filling out crap online under some fake name. That's not what we would want in this community. So, that being said, good luck with your decisions, and just remember, we are a close community, we may not always show it, but I've never had an instance where my neighbor doesn't come forward to help me, and I would hope that's the same for the rest of y'all. Have a good night.
Alright, general public comment, please. General public comment.
Kylie Kelschak, Eskenaba Township. This past March, I paid a visit to Delta County Airport with the goal of preserving my family history. This is when I had the pleasure of meeting the now former airport manager Andrea Newlin. She was obviously busy, I didn't have an appointment. She could've given me her card and told me to come back another day, but instead she invited me into her office. She gave me her full attention while I shared with her the story of my great aunt Sarah, wingwalker and stunt pilot who traveled the world with a flying circus before returning home to Delta County in 1926 with her Swedish pilot, Ernest Berg. I told her how at 24 years old, Sarah had cleared landing strips, opened a flight school, and began campaigning to put Eskenaba on the air map. Like many women in history, Sarah was never acknowledged for her accomplishments. But seeing as her male counterpart, Ernest Berg, received an honorable mention on the Delta Airport, um, history online there, I felt it necessary to address. Andrea was just as disgusted as I was that another woman was written out of history. And though she clearly had more work than any one person should be expected to handle, since she was acting as manager and assistant manager at the time, without missing a beat, she started checking her calendar to see if she had time to organize a Women's History Event Month to honor my aunt. This is the kind of work she did for the citizens of Delta County. This is the kind of help she was willing to provide. So it is unclear to me why Commissioners Moyle and Baron would choose to not communicate with her, but instead visit the airport on business while she was on vacation. Commissioner Moyle, you talk about destruction politics, but from where I am standing, it is the disrespect of disres- disrespect, let me try that again, of destructive politicians that is tearing our little community apart. Thank you.
Thank you.
General public comment. Thank you.
Now you're gonna hear the rest of the story. I didn't have enough time. I, like Mr. Myron, visited my neighbors, had coffee with them, chatted with them, and we talked about, what, did you sign something? Yes. Did you know why? Well, we didn't quite understand it. I turned in a lot of take my name off, and a lot of I oppose. Now, it might not count on the paperwork that was turned in to you. It counts to those people that took their name off. It counts to those people that oppose. I don't want, I don't want annex. I love Eskenaba Township. I don't have a problem with them. I don't know any other place where we have such freedom as this United States. And I am so proud to eliminate the people. It is a beautiful place, and let's not destroy it, please. Thank you.
General public comment.
Patty Briack, Eskenaba. I was just curious if you guys were familiar with the 19th Amendment. I heard Mr. Baron talk a lot about 1881, when something was passed regarding municipalities and annexation. Well, the 19th Amendment went into effect in 1920, and I'm here to stand with half women in here being landowners as well for the annexation, that we didn't have the right to pass and vote in 1881 regarding this stuff. Nor did half the people in here who chose to rent or live with their partner and not be on a deed of their registration of their house. So please do not bring up rules from 1881, when half the population here wasn't allowed to even have a say in it. Not just me from the age, but my ancestors. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please.
Um, I just have some information for you, Commissioner Baron. Um, it was brought about the last Ford River Township meeting. Um, one of the residents was stating how you have not been to a meeting ever since you came there to campaign to be a commissioner. And we just want you to, to make sure that you have the information. The meetings are held on the second Monday of every month at 7:00 PM at 3845K Road. And there's always a spot left on the agenda for you, ever since your predecessor, Teresa Nelson, used to come to every single meeting. Thank you.
General public comment, please. Thank you, and welcome. State your name, please.
My name is Ronnie Brightsman, Eskenaba. People don't wanna hear this, but I wanna thank the commissioners for getting through the process. Didn't look like it was easy, but you got done what you had to do. They might hate me for saying that, but you guys did your job.
Thank you. General public comment, please. Just state your name and where you're from, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, Lori Tronjo, Eskenaba Township. Um, I just wanted to say, many years ago, um, I wasn't involved, I didn't go to township meetings or anything at the time, when that big power line went through Flat Rock, there was this same kind of opposition. was this same kind of opposition. People's pacemakers were gonna quit, everybody was gonna get cancer. It was gonna ruin the water. It went through anyway. No one's pacemakers quit, no one got cancer, it didn't ruin the water. And everyone that said it was gonna ruin their life are still living in their same houses, going to their same jobs, cutting their same grass. It didn't ruin anybody's life. If the solar would go through, the same people would live in their same houses, they would cut their same grass, go to their same jobs. It wouldn't hurt anyone's life. And I'm tired of hearing people say, well, we're not gonna get the money from it. There are many businesses in Flat Rock, in Escanaba Township, in Escanaba, in the whole county, I don't get any money from it. And they don't do me any good. Many businesses do, many don't. I'm tired of hearing that. Thank you. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. General public comment, please.
Hello, Kathy Scott, Buck River. Just have a very quick comment, a little off-topic, but the 19th Amendment did not grant women the right to vote. They had the right long before that, and many women voted before that. The 19th Amendment outlined the right that must be protected for women and all people in America. Women were voting before that. Look up Mercy Otis Warren, she was an amazing woman in political history. So I just wanted to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. General public comment, please. General public comment, state your name and where you're from.
As far as ruining the water, not dead. It didn't ruin my water, that ATC line. They're going down, they're drilling down through the bedrock, doesn't need to be a scientist to figure this out. They drill down through the bedrock, put their pole in there, and if they're not on a corner, it, they put pea gravel, home pea gravel around it. Anything drains down in there, if you're in a water hole, like his land, right on 426. There's a pole there, pea gravel, and there's a little pond there in the spring, and whether divers will grow up until now, or cow remains, or cow shit, whatever you wanna call it. Sorry. Uh, it has a chance to go right down into the groundwater that a lot of people's wells are at. So it did make a difference in the water, just for correction. Bob, you're one smooth cookie, I'll tell you that. Seen in action before, you're just the same. You cost the township money. You fought with the prior board that you're complaining about now, and then you're complaining about this board. This is a damn good board we got. I hope we don't lose them. We lost one good guy on the planning commission. That petition that was around, I don't, I didn't see it, but there has to be some problem with it that that many people took their name off of it. Apparently they were confused somehow, or misled, whatever. To take that many people and get off of it, they were not the, you know, I mean, you just don't do that unless you just understood it and you didn't want to be on. Whether you count that or not, it shouldn't be valid if it's that, if that many people were misled. Apparently, it's not right. Bob, you said, "All people should be represented." All people. Why are all five of you deciding this? Bob said, "The committee can do what they want with the townships." He said that last township meeting, he said, he's on the podium, he said, "The committee can do what they want with the townships based on some rule way back when. We can adopt a township, we can end it."
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Your few minutes have elapsed. Sorry to cut you off. Thank you for your time. General public comment.
Luna Whitney, Escanaba Township. Tonight, when Mr. Barron was rambling on and on and on, one thing that I managed to coherently hear over and over again is that we are not a democracy, we are a democratic republic. That is true, with emphasis on democratic. The process of democracy goes back in our nation's history to the ratification of the first 10 amendments, to the foundation of the colonies, throughout our entire history, to every amendment that's been added, to the process that you sit there on that board and go through at least twice a month, to every committee meeting you go to, to even the privilege of sitting on that board, is a democracy, a vote. So to say that we are not in any way a democracy is a fallacy and an insult to the national innocent that you pledge allegiance to at the beginning of every meeting. You should be ashamed of yourself, sir.
Thank you. General public comment. General public comment. State your name, where you're from, and you have three minutes.
Teresa Peach, Escanaba Township. I wanted to make a statement that Mr. Barron stood up at a meeting one day and said that he does not believe there should be any zoning. Delta County, wake up, because if there's no zoning anywhere, what's gonna happen to your property, your property, mine, everybody's? We're gonna be in some serious stuff. And as far as these new borders or annex, whatever you wanna call it, I hope you all do take this seriously because it does affect a lot of people. And I hope you think about it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment. State your name, where you're from. Thank you.
Larry Clope, Escanaba Township. When you're doing your considerations on this situation, I'd like to ask, have you answer one question, because I have never heard it. Who decided and why were the boundaries chosen there? Why were the people included that don't want it? That's all I ask. I'd like to answer for that.
Thank you, sir. General public comment. General public comment.
Sir, state your name, where you're from. Tony Seymour, uh, I'm from Delta County. Uh, so... Wow. Wow. What are we doing here? Right? Holy cow, should we even have to do this? Everybody has a ton of things that are brought here. This is, this, but this is a couple of people, uh, that are, well, let me check the numbers here. I've been taking notes, I've been coming to all these meetings, I, believe me, I have a lot of other things I'd rather be doing. I got a chimney to take off of a roof right now, I don't have time for this, but I'm gonna make time. Where, where do I even start? Uh, 26 is a good number, right? So 26 people's interests trump that of how many, 1,000 people? I think there's more than 26 people in this room. You could probably triple it or quadruple it. Half an hour ago, you could have quintupled it. There's, there's a lot of, uh, resistance to this movement here, and it doesn't seem to be, uh, noticed or received by some members of the board. We forego that information for now. However, anyway, I have some other things I'd like to touch on, some of the people made great points about. Uh, water contamination, very real problem. People have seen water contamination all across the US in recent months, real big water contamination, and it's become a real fear of the people, a real viable fear. Putting, okay, let's, let's talk some more numbers here, since I've been taking a couple of notes. 455,000, 455,000 panels. Think of that number. Try, try to quantify that number. Just put it in your head and try and picture how many that is, okay? But we got some more numbers at the same time we got that one, didn't we? We got 17,000. Has, has anybody been to the airport and know what that solar array looks like? 17,000 panels? Multiply that by how many to get 455,000 panels? How many anchors does it take to anchor one panel? How many posts is that piling through the ground into our water supply? Where are we gonna get water when our groundwater is no longer clean? What are we gonna drink? What are we gonna bathe in? What are we gonna cook in? We can't do this. There's no way it's gonna go that far.
Please address us.
This podium is ridiculous, I need to address the whole room here. Everybody is here for the same reason, we all need to hear the same information. Like people had stated earlier, people that are trained in public speaking know that this podium should be able to address everyone in the room, not just the board, because these general comments are for everyone's knowledge. And for me to address everyone, not even just the board, although you may want it that way. We can continue because I got more points, I've been taking notes, like I said. Uh, next one, God, or I'm not gonna make any personal accounts, but somebody else did claim that they didn't want their family any, any involved in this, and I was privy to them bringing their family directly to these events, which I was astonished. I couldn't believe that someone would bring a pre-18 anyone to these events, or a pre-16, or a pre-12, or anything, but you involved your family before anybody else did, whoever that was. And emotions. I heard several times from Commissioner, won't name him, won't make any personal attacks, but I've heard several times that emotions aren't involved at all in this today. But I did see something else in the corner there that didn't agree with those statements. It showed a lot of emotion, a lot.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. General public comment.
Warren Golden, Escanaba Township. Can you hear me back there?
Hear you.
Okay. Uh, like I mentioned before, the only reason this annexation was filed is because they wanted a solar farm in Escanaba Township. So I want to talk about solar farms. You hear about all these studies that say solar farms don't affect property values. So who does these studies? Most are conducted by solar developers and solar companies. There are few independent studies. Theirs are based on the size of, size of the farm. They're based on 13 acres, 27 acres, 56 acres, 134 acres, 160 acres. The one in Escanaba Township was for 1,200 acres. Now, the one at the airport is 12 acres. It's surrounded by a chain link fence, and those homeowners have to see that every day. Now, ours would be 100 times larger than the airport. The studies I did find were for realtors and homeowners. They looked at the time it took for them to sell their property and the final sales price. It varies by how far away the farms are to their homes. They lost value by 5% and up. Within one half-mile would be affected the most. One mile away, not as much. Now, people who rent can easily move up, but homeowners will have, find it hard to move and sell their property. Because homeowners are against solar farms, the Bureau of Land Management and the Department of Energy, now solar farms can be built on public properties. This is where they should be built. We could stay in agricultural and private properties and will be protected. Now, some landowners would have solar farms on three sides of them, and there are some that would happen here in Escanaba Township. Also, a lot of us would have, a lot of us have large farms across our world. So that would be 1, 2, 3, 4 solar farms on one property. So, in some, to summarize, would you buy a house with a 1,200-acre solar farm in your backyard? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. General public comment, please.
Well, I think the greeting "Good Evening" is in order here, seeing it's after 9 o'clock. Once more, I'm Judy Adamini. Hi, guys. I have several thoughts. First of all, sitting here and listening to all of this tonight, I did not see a mob, and I very much resent that. You talk about wanting people and democracy and people to stand up and, and hear their voices, and you refer to them as a mob? Shame on you all, just not Mr. Barron. Shame on you all.
General public comment.
Ken Kanauf, White Cop, Escanaba Township. I just want to clarify something. 26, um, landowners have been, said several times, however, in the original 2017 Orion, paperwork that we have, there were nine landowners that wanted solar on their property, two others who were going to allow the, um, wiring and things to go through their property, not to have solar on. So I don't know where the 26th figure comes up from, but you're dealing with nine landowners. So, and I guess I'm one of the mob leaders.
Thank you. General public comment.
I received this email earlier today. I am Teresa Ross. I have mobility and health challenges that prevent me from being here. I can no longer watch these meetings via Zoom to provide public comment. After submitting a FOIA request, I have learned that only one bid was received to quote, "Hook Zoom up properly," unquote. I hired 906 Tech Express to help me access the documents that were provided to me as a result of my FOIA request. I asked him, I'm sorry. I asked him if he had ever been approached to install Zoom and whether 70,000 to 75,000 was a reasonable quote. He did not think it should cost anywhere near that amount and would be interested in seeing the specs. I know others have approached this board with offers to install Zoom for a much lesser amount. I am asking you tonight to pursue getting additional bids. In addition to eliminating Zoom access to your constituents, tonight you eliminate YouTube access, the most heated controversy to date with this board, and you choose to go dark. I say choose because Mr. Moyle indicated the reason being change of venue, venue, and the IT venue could certainly be anticipated weeks ago because the IT director has an assistant and the chamber has the capabilities. Your excuse is flimsy. I will continue to fight for Zoom access. When Marquette, Chippewa, Schoolcraft, Menominee, and Dickinson counties can provide Zoom to their citizens, there is no reason Delta County cannot. Thank you.
General public comment, please. General public comment. Okay, one more call, general public comment. Are you interested, anybody? Last call. One once, one twice, or at the time for general public comment has ended. Please pass that down to, uh, Commissioner Peterson, we'll have Commissioner's comments.
I guess I've already said a lot today. Not sure I want to say anymore. I'll just say that, again, this was not a decision that was made lightly, uh, by any member on this board. And we, we have created enemies here tonight with our decision, because no matter what our decision was, we were gonna, we were gonna offend some people, we were gonna take some people's rights. I said, mentioned that earlier, and, uh, again... And, again, the reason why it came to us was a eighteen-hundred-something law that stated that this is where it comes to. And none of these decisions were taken lightly. I feel good about my decision, I also feel bad about my decision. And I know that's double speak, but it's the truth. Nobody's a winner here tonight. There's going to be hard feelings between neighbors and friends and relatives, and I normally don't say I'm sorry, but I'm sorry it came to this. That's it.
Commissioner Peach.
I'm kind of tired. Great meeting. It was. Forty-four comments to show you how great our county is and how our involvement is in our government. I love it. If I wasn't so tired, I would encourage more. But I'm not going to respond to all of them, I'm just going to make a few little comments that during the one break, somebody kind of wondered why I wanted to stretch this out longer and not have a final vote today, legalities, issues. I had an opinion from Mr. Baron's attorney, thank you, that we were obligated to accept the application, fine. To pursue it farther than that, I need another legal opinion on the county side, so that, just to let you know about that. On the airport board, I just found out about a month ago that the land is being leased to the city, the airport takes revenue in there, and just to give that information out there, that it's not the county's solar farm, it's something that we lease land, we get revenue for. Zoom, I'll mention it again, especially when somebody brings it up, I'm for it, always I did go visit the Delta County Cornell Forest Land with Mr. Matson last month. I looked at the ponds, I looked at other stuff that I missed the first time. Anyone that wants to know my opinion on that, please get ahold of me and I'll tell you, because I know there was some controversy either at district meetings and earlier at the county meeting, and now I have a better view of our forest property. Michigan State Industries, I have, they supply signs for townships, fire signs. My MAC interaction, I looked at what they offer, all the colors, the thicknesses are really heavy aluminum, and I know townships are in the process of redoing everything, the whole county is. And they have some really good deals, and the reason I didn't bring it up, I brought it up at Escanaba Township, I didn't pursue it really good because of the boundary change. We don't know where we're going with that, so I just left about the docket to continue talking about it, but I wanted to get it on the public record tonight. I also want to talk about, anyone, I was at a MAC, another MAC meeting, and some of the parents out there, I have a lot of information on evidence-based approaches to reducing childhood obesity. It may seem insignificant to most people, but if someone wants some literature on that, it's very informative, I do have that. I also, I do represent Gladstone, so don't forget the Fourth of July coming up. I don't know if we have a meeting before then, but we have one of the biggest events in the UP, as far as I'm concerned, thanks to the Dr. Mary Creighton funds and the great staff at City of Gladstone that puts that on every year. Also, we have music from seven to nine at Van Cleef Park. Give them a plug there so we can get some people into our community. And last, I'm picking and choosing what I want to, I want to congratulate the 2023 graduates. They're going to be in our spot someday, they're going to be living in our county, and I want to give a real good shuttle, a shuttle to the kitty gardeners that graduated. The reason is, I'm on this board hoping that I had something better to offer when I'm off this board for the 2034 graduates. Thank you very much.
The number is twenty-eight times, seventeen thousand panels comes out the books, twenty-seven, twenty-eight times to get four hundred and fifty thousand.
A former president, Abraham Lincoln, of the Gattysburg address, also had some pretty good clips. When you reach the end of your rope, tie a knot, hang on.
Okay, first off, I'd like to acknowledge what Commissioner Peach said in the beginning of the meeting about unusual activity. I would like to have more clarification on what you're looking for. My unusual activity definition might slightly differ than yours. We have procedures in place that anything above $10,000 has to be a sealed bid, and it has to come before the board, so everybody would have acknowledgement of those bills that are being paid. There's a lot of other stipulations. Anything above 500 needs a purchase order, which means it has to go to, it's put in by the department head, and then it has to be approved by the administrative assistant. Anything above $2,000 needs to have three quotes. Those three quotes are just asked by the department heads that is requesting, and then after all that is done, it gets submitted into the department head, and they enter it into our VSNA system, and then from there it goes on to the administrator, to the clerk, and then also to the board. So we all review those. So we are transparent, there are ways, there's no unusual activity that has not been presented to this community. And second, I want to leave on a good note, is that NAMA Music Festival starts this weekend, it's Friday and Saturday, so it gates open at 11:30 on Saturday, too, so just to let everybody know, I hope to see you guys all there.
Okay. In regards to your ability to speak to this board, I might not like what you're saying, but that doesn't negate your right to say it, I will never conduct myself that way. Being called corrupt, I, if you have information on corruption, you need to bring it to the police or the prosecutor, because I am, nobody that I know on this board is corrupt. You might not like some of the decisions people make, but corruption is illegal activity, and that needs to vote in public safety immediately and be dealt with, or the state police, or what have you. Thank you for coming and spending numerous hours with us tonight. For those of you who spoke, thank you for speaking, have a safe trip home. With that, we have a meeting notice. Okay, regular Board of Commissioners meeting is on 7/18 at 5:15 in the Service Center. Regular Commissioner meeting on 8/123 at 5 o'clock, Information and Workshop, that's at the Service Center. The Board of Commissioners meeting at 5:15, at 8:15 at 5:15. Thirty-day notice, no appointments, we can entertain a motion during. Move on second, thank you.